Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for any of those who are in harm's way. Thank you. The notice requirements of the Old Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting and the notice of regular meetings adopted by the board on January 10, 2022. Such scheduled notice of meetings is posted at the Municipal Building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for publication on January 11, 2022, was filed with the clerk of the Mount Olive Township on January 11, 2022. I direct this announcement to be entered in minutes. We have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yeah.
Dr. Gales?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. Weematt?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse, would you please move the approval of minutes?
I make a motion to approve 2.1, the minutes for June 13, 2022, and 2.2, June 13, 2022, closed session.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weematt?
Yes, abstain on anything CCM.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Oh.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Oh. I'm sorry, I have to abstain on a portion of 2.2.
Okay.
Of course, I wasn't there for. Thank you.
Are there any communication petitions from the board? Superintendent?
None at this time.
Do we receive any emails, Lynn?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a couple of items, because a lot has gone on since the last time we had a meeting. First and foremost, our new Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bangia, not a stranger to Mount Olive, has hit the ground running and is doing a phenomenal job entering the district. She's executing an entry plan, has met with most of the administrators, and is helping me facilitate the admin retreat that's taking place this week. The administrative retreat is an annual event that lasts four days, during which we reflect on data from the previous year, set new action steps individually and collectively for the next year, and then also reflect on the strategic plan to look at our strategic vision and what each of us can do to move that forward, and that is going on this week. The deliverables from that include presentations from each of the schools, and those will be video presentations that I will share with the board on Thursday. Tomorrow, there's going to be a letter going out to parents. The state has new standards for water testing, and one of the wells at the high school failed on that, so there'll be a letter going out about that, and you'll see on the agenda there's an emergency action item for the remediation of that. I've shared with the board the historical fund balance analysis. The end-of-year fund balance is an important financial indicator, and I'm proud to say that since we switched zero-based budgeting in 2019, in 2020 and in 2021, we had positive fund balances for those school years. And this year, it's the largest fund balance that we've ended with since 2014. So that's a major accomplishment. The entire admin team does extra work when it comes to zero-based budgeting, but particularly for Lynn and Gail, I want to thank you for your leadership on that, and that is a major accomplishment for the district. Last week in June, myself, Kevin Stansberry, Sharon Stazak, Suraj Ziad, Kevin Moore, and Sean Tia Boyd, I conducted three presentations at the Model Schools Conference, where we were honored as a model school for 2022 for the high school. Our presentation focused on advancing equity, our use of response intervention to increase the grad rate and respond to at-risk learners, and also the continued storied history of innovation at the high school. Summer projects. Phase two of CMS is well underway, with some of the portions 100% complete and then some other things that are still in progress. The generator project at the high school is about 20% done. The UV lights for the infectious disease program are about 85% done, and the long jump project is just about to get going in the next couple of weeks. Starting in the first week of June, we have our largest ever Mount Olive Success Academy in the summer, an extended school year, and that's a fantastic program that's going on. So unlike some other districts, we don't stop in the summer, we just keep going. We got our AP scores, and in the next couple of weeks, once that data gets uploaded, we will have the disaggregated five-year look-back report, but a record number, 804 exams with an average score of 3.08. So congratulations to our teachers and especially our students for doing that in the third year of the pandemic. Today, myself and Dr. Bangia with the new chairs of the Equity Task Force. The Equity Task Force began in 2020. We looked at some data and had some calls from the community to look at how we were being inclusive and how we were providing access for all students to the most rigorous programs. Given that it was during the pandemic, and at the time, I wanted to throw the weight of the superintendency behind that, and I kind of took that by, you know, the bull by the horns by that, if you will. We had a committee of about 50, 60 stakeholders who've been working for two years, and I announced to the committee in June that I'd be stepping down as kind of leading that. Dr. Bangia is the point person. Julius Moore and Danielle Kay are going to serve as the chairs for this year. And so today, we had a planning meeting. We have an Equity Task Force meeting in the afternoon on Wednesday, and we're going to be dedicating the morning portion of the October Professional Development Day and also August 30 to activities conducted by the Equity Task Force. August 30 is going to focus on cultural and demographic heritage. And then in October, we're going to talk about LGBTQIA. We're going to talk about neurodiversity and also disabilities awareness, among other topics. So we have that going on, and that concludes my report. Mr. President.
Did you want to say anything about the safest school to work?
Sure. Very happy to say, you know, with the security thing, it's been a work in progress. You know, in 2019, the board supported us putting cameras in all the elementary schools. We're going to district-wide radios now. If you remember, right before the pandemic, we did the only reunification drill in Morris County. So I thank the board for the support of the investment in that and also the use of a lot of our grant programs. But for the second year in a row, focused publications, and it was on the cover of Mount Olive Life this week for the second year in a row, where we're rated as the safest school district in Morris County. And that comes from a consummate commitment to that, constantly updating. You'll see on the professional development roster, you know, our director, James Karifi, keeps going for trainings to bring back to us that we then customize to meet our needs. We have a fantastic relationship with Mount Olive Police Department, Chief Beecher, the officers there, and also the New Jersey State Police. So it's a total team effort, but I think our commitment to safety has been backed by the board. It's nice to have that recognition. It's one of those things we want to keep quiet because, you know, it's just one of the things that we just do every single day. But thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Dr. G, personnel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Strelachi. It was myself, Dr. Zawiki, Dr. Bangia, Ms. Aquino, and Mr. Robinson, and Mr. Zidimer. A couple personnel items, the minutes all went out to the board members. We're trying something new. We're trying to meet, like the other committees meet, ahead of time of the board meetings, before the first board meeting of the month. And then if we have to meet that Monday before board meetings on an ad-needs basis, we will. So the board members will start getting these personnel minutes as they do the other committee minutes. A lot of these things we discussed need to be brought up unless the board members have questions directly. In closed session would be my advice, but just some of the highlights. We talked about just a standard operating procedure for administrators for vacation time approved, what that looks like, what's the past history prior to Dr. Zawiki getting here. So he's in the process, and Dr. Bangia looking at that. Dr. Kreider, I'm sorry, Dr. Kreider was at the meeting too, I apologize, Dr. Kreider. Doing an exit interview process for staff members as we move forward. My research and what I know, educationally, we're one of the few districts that do not do an exit interview for staff members leaving the district for whatever reason, whether it's personal reasons, family obligations, whatever that is. So we're looking to implement that in 22, 2023 school year. Vacation days for non-affiliated personnel hired to prior 2020 need to be adjusted. The contract states that vacation days are earned on a monthly prorate basis and shall be taken the year following the year that they are earned, which means employees would have to wait over a year to take vacation days. Employees hired after 7/1/2020 get their days upfront. This affects approximately 24 staff members, and they should get an extra 10 days to make them whole. So Dr. Zawiki and his admin staff is looking forward to that. ESY, Mount Olive Summer Academy, 2022 through June and July. Setup hours were not budgeted. Obviously, we're running those programs, so we have to, Ms. Libby in her wizardry, will find the money to pay the staff members that are already performing those duties. Moving down. A district evaluation action committee will be established to review evaluation models for staff, faculty, and administrators. Dr. Wiki said he discussed with the union already, and Ms. Aquino said we should share the documents that she has for an evaluation because that is her entire background, so that is a big help to us. This should be moved at the next agenda item in August. We're looking to do that. Handbooks, teacher and admin handbooks, evaluation handbooks will be created based upon that. They will contain exemplar, standard operating procedures, templates for pre- and post-observations. That has to be discussed in closed session of investigation. Okay, we're moving right along. Dr. Zawiki talked about the admin retreat. I brought up to the committee the LGBTQ presentation that the students gave us back in June. Concern that I had, and I know I shared it with other board members, they share that concern. Those students verbally said publicly that their requests to have their pronouns changed or their name they identified with changed in our real-time system was being denied. That is illegal against the law. Now, that's what they said. We don't know that to be true. So committee asked Dr. Zawiki to look into that. He's going to refer to Kevin Moore and then have, excuse me, Mr. Moore, have Mr. Moore look into that. And then, you know, I believe Dr. Bangia has already reached out to the advisor to see the status of that and what is happening with that. So I look forward to that because obviously, we don't want students feeling that way. It is a civil rights issue. It is a law issue. It was signed by Governor Murphy, whether you like it or not. Ms. Aquino brought up the current website. It's out of date, and we should clean up the staff directory for sure. Dr. Zawiki said that is going to be done in the process as we look to roll out a new website. And Ms. Aquino also pointed out that Lincoln scores have not been released yet, so we asked Dr. Zawiki and Dr. Bangia to look into that so we can have those out for students. They're out now? Thank you, Ms. Aquino. That's all I have. Ms. Aquino, Mr. Robinson, anything I missed? Anything you'd like to add?
You covered it.
Okay. Trick of technology. Dr. Gels.
Thank you. So the C and T committee met on July 18. The president was myself, Dr. Bangia, Dr. Zawiki, Ms. Narcisse, and Ms. Fenton by phone, and Dr. Kreider. My apologies. And Mr. Zaire. And we started out with Dr. Zawiki introducing Dr. Bangia to the committee as her first, in her first official capacity as the liaison from the district. This is what, day 16, is it?
I'm just counting.
Okay. And Dr. Zawiki proposed that we have kind of like a liaison committee to work with Dr. Bangia and introduce her to the various committees that we work with and that we sit on as a way of kind of transitioning her, even though she's hit the ground running. We want to expedite her transition in the smoothest way possible. So we suggested that we bring this to the full board and have that discussion. The committee was in favor of it. It's just a matter of deciding who wants to be the liaison to what committee and how we want to divvy up that labor. If it's by the committee that we sit on or a committee that we have an interest in, we can discuss that.
Sorry to interrupt. The idea was that there'd be for each, so there'd be one for K to five, one for middle school, and one for the high school. That'd be based upon grade bands would be the advisory liaison.
And you've just heard that the Lincoln data is available, and it's going to be discussed in the August meeting. That was from Dr. Zawiki. We talked about the discussion items, which included the health curriculum, which will be developed over the summer, and a parent night will be held in the fall to explain the new curriculum, including a sample of lessons related to the topics, and parents are eligible to opt out of the standards related to sex ed. We talked about the AP scores, and you heard a little bit about that, and we got a sheet that talked about the last three years of the AP scores. And as you heard, we're happy to report that we see more students earning threes, fours, and fives than we did in the 2021 school year, and we see an uptick of about 102 AP tests that were given, which is also a very positive sign from the COVID experience. I had asked about the technology plan, and the district technology plan is no longer required by the state, but we've actively completed both the future-ready and digital school submissions, and both of which identify much of the information that has been included in the older technology plans. One of the things that concerned me was, do we have a plan for introducing new technology, maintaining current technology, phasing out technology? And so Dr. Kreider will piece together elements of the future-ready and the digital school submissions to create a tech plan that includes how we will do all of those things. We talked about other action items, related services, special needs services for kids, and curriculum revisions we talked about. You will see on the agenda the approval for the first Lego League pilot program, as well as approval for Scholastic magazines, the acceptance of federal title money, IDEA, Title I through Title IV. And then we had a few questions that were asked, that were answered, and one was about Audible. We had an opportunity a couple of years ago to introduce Audible to our school district, and it was free, so Dr. Zawiki will find out if the program is still free. If not, he'll get pricing. And we talked about, a question was asked about dual enrollment, and there's a plan to return to pre-pandemic initiatives that will include a dual enrollment night. And there was a question asked about whether we have OT/PT for every school, and that response was there is one OT and one PT at Mountain View and one OT at Sandsure. The other schools have contracted related services. And I will turn to my colleagues. Very thorough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bangia.
Finance and operation, Mrs. Weematt?
Thank you. We met on July 18. In attendance was myself, Lisa Narcisse, and V. Stone, Anthony Giordano, he left at 6:40, Glenn Miller, James Karifi, Pam Magnus, Dr. Zawiki, Gail, Libby, Dr. Kreider, who left at 6:40. We basically met from 5:45 to 7:28. Dr. Zawiki came in and provided the following report of the fund balance. That's our largest fund balance since 2014. 2020 maintenance reserve established, and the current balance is a million. Current capital reserve balance is 3.5. And year 22 ended in a solid financial condition. Thank you. That information looks good for us. Facilities report. Mr. Miller then provided updates on the CMS renovation. Contractor is ahead of schedule, always good. Just finishing up some things of what has to be done. We did have some emergency abatement that was conducted with asbestos in the classroom flooring, but again, no danger to the students. And again, no exposure, no danger to students or staff. Bathrooms, demos complete, ceilings installed, gym floor removed, AC and duct work, a lot of stuff that we had going here. And renovations started on Friday, the 15th, and a lot of work. Thank you, Mr. Miller and your crew. Mom's guidance suite also was being done, where there are four offices being added, and the contractor did the framing, and the remainder of the work is going to be done by the Mount Olive Building and Ground staff. It should be completed by next week. Remember, this was the 18. Also, let's see, that was the guidance suite, the long jump, it's marked out. Contractor is currently overbooked. No surprise. It's either that or supply chain. But this time, the contractor is overbooked. So we will be started next month. Scoreboard conduit project, this should start in the next two weeks. There were several questions asked regarding Kia, the Ed Foundation, the panels at the bottom, the agreement with the Ed Foundation, a lot of questions. And I guess Dr. Zawiki and Ms. Libby, just to get some information back to us of what we were looking for on that. Let's see. Ms. Libby noted in order for the scoreboard to be fully usable would cost about $750,000, which is not currently budgeted. Then there's also going to be annual maintenance costs and stipend payments to staff because we do have to have staff as a part of that. We asked about donations and who will be collecting that, graphics. Ms. Libby noted that the lease payment for the scoreboard and multi-sports field, because remember, we did those together, is in the 22, 23 operating budget, and the first payment is due September 1st. We're just asking of when it would be fully functional, and Mr. Miller noted it would be by September. Also did the, well, they also did, the high school gym floor. Again, here we go with the supply chain issue with the manufacturer of the floor. It won't be in until late summer. Mr. Miller has, though, a plan of how to work around everything with the students since it is like later. The bathroom swipe project, it's about 25% complete. A while back, I had asked if there's any way we can get additional stickers and the maintenance contract extended for the system since we're the first educational facility that the contractor has installed. Just looking for some perks for the district of what we can get out of this project as far as, you know, noting us as a school district first time, and it would be nice just to see what else that there is. Also, Mr. Miller noted that the contractor was supposed to be working with real time because it is going to be with students with their real time, using their swipes. So that's why it's important with the real-time connection. There was a UV light project. Lights were installed. Project's about 85% complete. They're a motion, they're like, the lights have a motion sensor, so it's going to disinfect the air. Mrs. Fenton inquired about the lights being secure. He did. He said they are in cages. Going forward, Mr. Miller had also said that they're going to be looking at doing UVs in the HVAC systems, which is the way many houses and many buildings are going forward with. The ropes course, we've had this for many years at the high school, and it's on the agenda for approval. Half the project was done summer 2021. A lot of things had to be done just for safety reasons. The dome, a couple of things going on there, the motor. So Mr. Miller is working on that because he's always worried about the power being lost and the inflators going offline, so he's always on top of that. He is doing some replacement projects with this. Now, it doesn't, I mean, it's not like something's going to happen to the fan or something's going to happen to the motor, and it just goes boop. It doesn't. It takes like about five hours for it to be, you know, fully deflated. Also, he's looking at a generator, so we do have a backup, which, and the generator as our backup is on backwater. We're looking at March 2023. He's also looking at doing a temporary generator, so that this way then we have something in place at all times. Gymnastics, I inquired as to the costs and why it's done. Mrs. Narcisse asked if the athletes were currently going elsewhere. The athletes are currently going to Northern Alita practice. So our question is storage and just the whole idea of what is this project before we approve it. We just want to have some information, and I see on my little table, as I walked in here, is the gymnastics equipment and facility three-year plan. So we tabled that just to get more information so that we had that before we could go forward. I also inquired about the Geo Dome. I do see that we approved a couple of people there. That's on our list. And just what exactly we're doing with the Geo Dome. Ms. Libby said that she would follow up. Remember? I can forward to the response on it. Mr. Jensen provided me some information. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Let's see. Also, I was at carnival, and someone had come up to me from REC, and they were asking about pickleball and the Moms tennis courts. And I know Ms. Libby said that she would follow up with Miss Souffle. I believe we have a, because Mr. Miller is, does have money in the budget to resurface the courts. So what they're doing is... Money for the courts for next year. 2020, 23, 24? Yeah, sorry. No, no, point that out to me. I have no problem with that. And so a lot, I guess, of what they're doing in different schools is they're relining it, and I don't know that all the specifics I could find. I could send whoever you, or lend the information of what was, somebody sent to me and said that, you know, what about us doing pickleball? A lot easier for the students to play pickleball than tennis, but it's nice how they redo the courts itself, and it's just a matter of the lines. Again, again, information about this before we go forward with it. So again, any information that we can garner, I guess the REC department wants to work with us with that also. Can't see why not, because they just resurfaced the ones by Dan Jordan, and they're looking to resurface Turkey Brook, and then they're going to resurface something else. I don't remember. Maybe it's Flanders Park, and they were looking at doing the dual, tennis versus pickleball type of thing. The DW radio project, Mr. Miller and Mr. Karifi, they're going to be distributing the... The DW radio project, Mr. Miller and Mr. Karifi, they're going to be distributing the walkie-talkies to the district personnel. It's working really great with the town, with the communication. Mr. Karifi noted that, let's see, now that we, that the staff received the radio, that they need to sign off on the receipt of the radio. Mrs. Agnes was also there at our meeting, and she talked about that the cellular radios in the buses work much better than the current radios. So she was very happy with the radios and the project and how it was going. Mr. Karifi made a phenomenal presentation about this arm, the current stop-arm violation summons, and the money that has been brought in. The town gym has taken in $63,000 so far. Of the 253 adjudicated with fines, 251 are still open and waiting to be heard by the court. So this is really great. I know, he said something about people actually from other districts have reached out to us to ask us about this, and again, it's the safety of the kids. These people are passing buses. It's amazing. And I thought it would be, you know, just throwing it out there, just as a one thought, Mr. Karifi, you know, attending school boards for a presentation. You know, you make such a great presentation to us, you have such a great audience at school boards. Again, just throwing it out there, just for consideration. Sorry, only on page three. Bus routing software, Mrs. Agnes informed us about the new routing, Busrite, that was purchased. Loves it, thinks it's better than anything we've ever had before. Also, it works as far as bringing up our international students for this STEM program. Let's see, Mrs. Agnes, transportation, short several drivers, as in every school district, so anybody you know, very easy to go for a CDL and get some more drivers out on the road there. She also, and I thought this was a really neat idea on Mrs. Agnes's part, she wants to look into a driver fare within the district and have it at the middle school. You've got the buses right behind you there, so I was like, yeah, that's a good idea, making people aware, sometimes just making people aware that, you know, we are in need of drivers. Mr. Karifi did 11 residency investigations and all were determined to be living outside of Mount Olive School District. Thank you, Mr. Karifi. What's hard about this is that he's doing his job, and he's also doing this, and it's, he has to try and fit in of how he does his whole business of determining if people are within the district or not. Note was made about Powerschool demographic software. We were looking for more information. Mrs. Libby will follow up with Dr. Zawiki and Powerschool for more information. She talked about the IDEA 2023. I put my ears in for you. IDEA and ESSA grant applications were due on July 15th, have been submitted for five. We also did a, the district auditors submitted to conduct a special audit of the reports, IDEA, ESSA, DRTRS, X8. The use of facilities, we also had a thing on facilities as far as the dome and the different pricings that's in there. So again, a lot of stuff, I don't know, did everybody get that in their package, the facilities thing that was attached, or no?
No, I think that was just...
Is that something we're going to be sending out to the, to all the board, or just so they...
Why would they want to refer to me if we go to New York?
Okay, thank you. Let's see, she also gave us, it was a really good article on the impact of rising interest rates on education. Definitely, it's in Education Week of July 5th. I would suggest other board members also reading that article. Again, it's Education Week, and it was July 5th, information on that. She did go through, let's see, cell phones, disposal of cell phones on resident students, and a lot of these are just all the action items that you're going to see of what I had just spoke about. And there's, there was two resolutions that were added, and it's the Horizon Healthcare, it's a contracted service, and just the rental, correct, of the temporary generator for the dome?
Dr. Zawiki mentioned the additional urgency for the ice cream.
Yep, for today. And that was it? Did I cover everything? Sorry. It was a lot we had.
Madam President, Madam Chairman, I just have a question, and I do apologize, I didn't ask this, or maybe I did in committee. The guidance suite at Moms, is that budgeted? Is that budgeted?
It's budgeted through the maintenance reserve, this project, and it put on the budget for several years and several years, it got turned away, so it took a little project that had been turned away several times, and I budgeted them through maintenance.
Okay. All right, super, so you don't have to pull money, but that's all I'm asking for. Thank you. I should have asked that in committee, I totally forgot.
One question, Ms. Weimert. How long was your meeting?
An hour and a half.
Forty-five to seven.
An hour and a half.
It was a long time.
It was a couple of days.
A long meeting.
Aren't you hungry by the time it was done?
Actually, because it was on, oh, I didn't. Take the kids out of Delaware, really Delaware.
And these are all from Ms. Libby, all these, everything that I read, I cannot take any credit for. She put everything together. Thank goodness for that reporter that you got going.
Dr. Gales.
Thank you. So, Ms. Weimert, I understand that you said we're getting more information from Ms. Libby about the scoreboard. I will confess, I'm not a big fan of the scoreboard, but we don't have any, we're still waiting for information on the donation. Has the Ed Foundation done anything we know?
So, I know there were some vacations and things like that. I texted with them at the end of last week, and we're supposed to meet this week and have an update, and I'll forward it out to the board once I get an update from them. And I know there's a couple of events that we're planning for, that they are planning for August, and I'll let you guys know about this.
Are they still planning to come to the board in August?
I don't know. So just to remind you, the contract says that they will send their financials annually to the board secretary. So I, once again, they don't work for me, I don't control them. They're independent, you know, I'm, if you remember from Godfather Part II, Johnny Ola, the messenger boy, I'm Johnny Ola, I'm just the messenger boy here, so don't shoot the messenger, please.
Is there anybody we could talk to at the Ed Fund National?
You can do, you can do whatever the heck you want.
Who is that person?
Chuck, it's Harry Weiss, sorry, Howie Weiss, I apologize.
Has changed, right? Is Brian Scheckter still there? Because he's the one that did the presentation originally.
No, no, it was, the presentation last year was Chuck and Brian.
Brian resigned.
So we, so we have a payment that's due, when is the payment due? September. So the board is making that, that payment.
The real problem here is, we need a scoreboard. I mean, no.
Have one.
Well, we, well...
You don't have one with the TV in it.
Well...
Yeah, I guess, a lightning. We're like carrying the little baseball one over all the games.
Okay. $750,000 is a lot of money for...
It is, I agree with you. I...
Five hundred thousand, now we're 50% over.
It's not efficient.
So let me correct on that, because that's a, I want to make sure, in the fire hose of fake news that goes around, that that's qualified. The, the extra money is for all of the bells and whistles, to have essentially the same production value that you would get at MetLife Stadium. We don't necessarily need that to make it, make it operational, so let's qualify that. It'll be a functioning scoreboard with all the advertisements, with video and all that other stuff, but to do live editing, like you're watching something on ESPN, all that extra stuff, that's, that's what that's included, to have it completely fulfill its potential. But to have what we had discussed would be able to do, that functionality, we're going to be able to do based upon the original estimate. So I think it's really important that we, that, that is qualified, because it's, it's not going to cost all that money.
So it's, we're not getting the, we're not getting the ESPN highlights or anything like, we're just getting the basic package?
Correct. And then the idea being, well, we also don't have the academic programming to support that yet. We don't have the classes and things like that. So as we design the classes that support doing all of that, then we can talk about purchasing that equipment or getting donations for that equipment or whatever it may be. But that's getting the, the cart way before the horse.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, sorry, Dr. Gales.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, from what I understood, it wasn't purchasing, it was all going to be donations. Eventually, we purchased initially, and then donations were coming in to pay us back.
Correct. That is agreement with the Ed Foundation. The agreement was never for that extra stuff, so that, that's, that's a conversation that has happened after the acquisition of the scoreboard and what it could do at, at the basic level, which is better than anything for 50 miles around.
Just real quick, Mr. President, and I thank Mr. Tony Schalaci for this, in that presentation, the contract does state that we split revenue share with the Ed Foundation 50/50, however, if they miss a payment, that becomes 100% our asset, and we, we reap 100% of all that. So that was the safety net, and, and that was really the driving force of our board president. I don't think you were board president at the time, I think you were, maybe, maybe, no, you weren't, obviously, but you brought that up and said, hey, we should get a little nosh off of this, too. So we do have the safety net, just like the dome, just like these Board of Ed buildings, the scoreboard has the ability to be an immediate revenue generator, unlike the dome and these Board of Ed buildings. It will take time, and the dome is almost paid off at this point, so I don't want to make anyone think that, you know, we just willy-nilly went into this and, and didn't have these safety nets in place per our contract.
I'll reiterate, I've not been a fan since day one because of the cost to the taxpayers. It was originally $450,000, somewhere around there. And then we were told that we would get this huge donation from a community business, and I think that, I think that turned the tide for a couple of votes on the board.
Absolutely.
And we also asked for letters of intent from these hundreds and hundreds of advertisers who wanted to advertise on the scoreboard. We don't have a commitment from the community business owner. We don't have letters of intent. We don't have any kind of commitment from the Ed Foundation. And coming out of COVID, and this is what I said when it was first introduced, coming out of COVID, I didn't think it was fair that this board would lay that kind of burden on the taxpayers. And yet, here we are, thanks to the community, that we're going to be making the payment, and then somewhere down the road, we might get the money back. I just, I don't think that's the right way to do business. I don't, I don't think any viable business does business that way. And as a board, we shouldn't be, I'm going to say, willy-nilly with...
Real quick, I don't think we will, and I said we weren't willy-nilly. We established safety nets for us in that contract, that you're right, if these things fell through, when we needed this big donation, or these other things didn't happen, it becomes our asset, becomes 100% revenue generating for us in the long term, just like we did with the dome, just like we've done in the past with these two buildings, well, this will be more of an immediate revenue generating for us. May not happen overnight, may not happen in a month, may not happen in two months, but it will be more immediate, just like the dome eventually will be, that was passed by this board, 109O, and just like the purchasing of these buildings was passed by this board and I know. So I do agree with you, Dr. Gales, I understand, but that's the reason why we put those, those safety net measures in the contract.
Respectfully, I think there's another portion that is being omitted, in that the dome project, Mr. Schalaci was the chair of the Budget Committee in 2020, when the dome project was approved. And the dome project was part of the 2020 budget process, and I killed the project in June of 2020 because of the pandemic. So this board supported that project without the involvement, and I've reiterated this before, without the involvement of the Ed Foundation. We were just going to buy it straight up with year-end money. So this board supported that in 2020. It became an issue in 2021 last summer, and for whatever variety of reasons, but you're leaving out the, the first half of this story, which was, it could have just gotten done in 2020, but I was worried about not having a scoreboard for the fall 2020 football season because of the pandemic slowdown and killed the project. We were full going ahead with doing that, and the only project we did that summer was the Geo Dome. But this board supported doing it without any donations, fully taxpayer dollars, in spring of 2020.
I would have voted no even then.
That is fine, I'm just saying, but it's important to point that out.
I will, I respect what you're saying there, but things change. It's like businesses have changed over, so in a year, people are going to change their system. There's regret. I regret voting for it.
That, and I don't take that personally, I'm just giving the, the full scope of the entire story and where we landed.
Any else?
Yeah.
I forgot to add. I forgot to add.
I'm sorry.
I feel bad. I also asked about a cost comparison of taking down the dome, because remember, our idea was to leave it up year-round, so I think it's a good idea, and the committee agreed, we should do a cost comparison of, now that it's been up for the year, what is our cost comparison of us taking it down and putting it up? Again, I know it has to do with the wear and tear and everything else with it, but that was a request from, also from the committee, just to see. Always looking to see. We should always check.
Robson, yes?
Yeah, the Ed Foundation, I was part of the Ed Foundation at one time, and they really haven't, you know, raised any money. Not, at least not the kind of money we're talking about. They do get donations from people, but not, not what we were expecting. We were expecting a $400,000 donation from one entity, and of course, that's not anywhere in the horizon that I've heard of or seen anything about. I love the idea of a scoreboard being that way, but scoreboard is not used all that And I think it's a lot of money to put out there for that kind of, you know, for a short term. So I would think, you know, we should look at it long and hard again now that we're hopefully getting back to somewhat of normalcy. It's, it's important, you know, in one way, because it looks nice, but, and, but I don't know that we're, how much we're going to make as far as ads are concerned, I just don't know. The dome was a different story. The dome was something that our kids could use all year-round, and that was one of the selling points of getting it. And when we sell the time, it was a bonus, and it helped pay for it. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that we've done, like this building. This building was purchased with the idea that the other building next to it would pay for it in, in full, and that's exactly what's happening, it's paying for it. And in 15 or 20 years, I forget what the time, the limit was, it will be paid for, and the whole thing is ours, and then we can sell that time over there. But essentially, we did this for nothing. There was a lot of things that we've done, the board, are not, you know, maybe the most kosher things, but they were good. So anyway, that's my thing. Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback that comment with just a question, not to anybody, but because I've only been on here for a year, so scoreboard is a lot of money, and that made me think of the backdrop for the theater. I don't know what you actually call it, but would that be a comparison, possibly, as far as...
No, absolutely not.
As far as use and, and price?
You're talking about the backdrop at the...
The LED screen.
That cost us $250,000. It's portable, and we also use it in the middle school. That was an immediate use for all of our drama productions and what have you. That has been paid for over and over and over. That was, that was really an academic purchase.
I'm not saying I disapprove of it, but please don't get me wrong, but I was just kind of thinking, because I, I think the scoreboard, Libby, as a, as a sports mom, I mean, I'm sitting there all the time for multiple sports, for, you know, different activities and stuff. As somebody who's more into theater sees the use of that, I do see the need, I mean, I don't need a grandstand scoreboard, but it really is quite difficult to, to see what the scores are right now when you fill them in. We, we need something. I just, I, there was just a question, it just popped in my head.
Have a look at the drama budget versus the sports budget.
So, again, being new, similar to Lisa, what is the cost of getting the scoreboard just simply for a functioning scoreboard, not the 750 with the bells and whistles? My apologies for being the new one here.
I don't know what the total cost is going to be, but you're going to have an inherent cost, and all the electrical work and excavating we're going to have to do to put the scoreboard in, besides the purchase of the scoreboard and the architectural fee to design a scoreboard. Now, now, after that, it becomes what you want to do with the scoreboard.
The extra fees.
That I don't know the cost of.
We don't have a number on that.
Sure, we can get some estimates on that. I can tell you Anthony Gianfocaro donated the architectural component of it, so, but I will...
And was the electrical already run out to the field?
So the, the electrical was damaged when we had the lightning strike, so we actually do have some insurance money that's going towards fixing some of the electrical, I believe, right, from last year? Is there a little bit going towards that? I thought there was some, there was a claim last year, correct?
Yeah, but that's...
No, but when the, like, when the, remember, we went and got the other scoreboard from down in Virginia?
The claim paid for the...
So it paid for that temporary one? That's about it, but it does need to, to get done. But I'll get the information from Anthony Gianfocaro, and we can send that out to you.
And then also, are we able to rent the scoreboard out when other groups come in if they're utilizing it to, in the future?
I believe, right, from last year? Is there a little bit going towards that? I thought there was some, there was a claim last year, correct?
Yeah, but that's...
No, but when the light, when the, remember, we went and got the other scoreboard from down in Virginia?
The claim paid for the scoreboard.
So it paid, it paid for that temporary one, that's about it, but it does need to, to get done. But I'll get the information from Anthony Gianfocaro, and we can send that out to you.
And then also, are we able to rent the scoreboard out when other groups come in if they're utilizing it too?
Absolutely.
In the future?
Yeah, so it's the board's asset.
And we add that to one of our rental fees.
Regardless, yes, correct.
Well, that's the point, if you have advertisement, someone's using the, the field for, say they have the Morse County Championships in there, we're still going to generate revenue off those ads on there.
Anyone else? Mr. Sire, did we have any kind of policy meeting?
There was no policy, did not meet.
Are there any subcommittee reports from the board? Yes, Liz?
I know I myself met Marley, and we were reviewing the committee that you volunteered me for.
And you're doing a good job, I tell you.
And I apologize to anyone who hasn't, you know, who has expressed interest, we have a bunch, a few people, we have a few, a few people that were interested in it, and my apologies that nothing has gone out yet back to them, it's just that we're trying to get everything in place, we want to make sure. I even went and found the Rotary Club, and their whole book of how they put together, you know, and Jen and I found a lot of information in there, and then we were putting on the positives and the negatives. Again, it's going to come to the full board, just to see, you know, before we do anything, so that we'll have a nice functioning, so it's a reach out, if anybody is wondering what it is, it's a reach out to the community. We were going to have, I think, I don't remember, Lynn knows the number of people that said they were interested.
It was about eight, I'd say.
About eight, yeah. And so, these people, and again, it's, how are we going to be doing this? Dr. Zawiki or his designee is also going to be a part of that too. You know, so it's basically going to be, what do you want to see from the community? Because that's the one thing we always hear from the community, we don't feel like we have a voice, we want them, you know, you have to come to a board meeting. Well, this is going to be a committee that will be reaching out beyond the committee, beyond themselves, because there'll be the community reaching out to the community. So again, Jen and I have just started trying to get that together with everything, so just wanted to keep...
At a restaurant, right?
Thanks, Tony.
Did she buy?
Oh, we shared dessert.
No. For her, you shared dessert?
Yeah.
Do we have any subcommittee reports from the community? Okay, President's report. First of all, I'm happy to see everybody here, I thought everybody was away on vacation. I have two things. Number one, I'm going to address the perception the community has of this board, and then I'm going to suggest a corrective action plan for our meetings. It's been said at this meeting several times, it's been written on social media, that this board seems disconnected and dysfunctional. That's the wrong assumption of this board. You can see by tonight all the matter that we go through. But the board at times seems confused, and we are confused because of lack of information on a timely basis. We received this agenda on a Friday evening, and unless you were in that particular committee, you have not had the opportunity to ask any questions of anyone or get any information about the other action items that we are supposed to vote on tonight. And that's not due on our duty, the way it's supposed to be done. We are not well-educated on some of these motions that we're working on. That has to be corrected. And so the correction action plan I'm going to introduce tonight is this. Probably Mr. Robinson and I are the only ones who remember, but about 30 years ago, we, we toyed with the idea of having what's called Board of the Whole. For those of you who do not know what Board of the Whole is, you would not have heard these committee reports tonight. Our first meeting of the month would have been of every committee. The board would be involved in every committee. It didn't work, it became too con, too congested, too cumbersome, too convoluted, we were there till 1:00 in the morning, some of the board members on occasion, because of confliction, had to leave the room, sometimes we had to close the meeting to the public and so forth. So we went to the committee meetings. Many districts only have one meeting a month, we have two. And when we originally went to two, many, many years ago, even before I got on the board, because I attended board meetings five, six years before I even got on the board, the first meeting of the month is supposed to be the workshop meeting, whereby we discuss what we've discussed now. It also gives the board, two week, the board members, two weeks to ask questions about those particular action items, to investigate, to analyze, and to make better educated decisions on those action items. So, starting in September, the first meeting of the month, Dr. Zawiki, you have to get your administration ready for this, the first meeting of the month, we will have all of these action items, but not one of them will be voted on. They will be voted on at the regular meeting. The first meeting is going to be the workshop meeting. Now, I'm well aware that exigencies happen every day of the week, so we have always given the superintendent the latitude to resolve any, you know, emergency situation on a temporary basis, and then we vote on it retroactively. But that would be the only exceptions. If that, if that item is not on that first agenda, first meeting, it will not be voted on at the second meeting. We've even had situations, and it happened again at the last meeting, where a board member asked for a closed session, because something was all, just added on to the agenda that they didn't even discuss in their own committee. We, this board has to, we owe it to the public, we've been, been entrusted with their tax money and everything else. We have to know what we're voting on, and I'm telling you right now, for myself, sometimes I don't know what I'm voting on, because it's too complex, and I have not had the opportunity to analyze it, to investigate it, and to ask enough questions. But starting in September, the first meeting of the month, there will be no action items voted on unless it's an emergency action item on. Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
That's going to be, as long as I'm president, to the end of the year, you can change it if you want next year, but that's the way it's going to be from now until the end of the year. Yes, Liz?
Mr. Schlotchi, that's the way we used to do it. I've been on 13 years, and I know that's the way we used to do it, and I'm glad to see...
We have melded, we have melded all of this stuff into every meetings, and it's, it's just too much. Now, I understand in the summertime, we have so much going on here, that we, we only have the one meeting, although we used to have two meetings then too. So, yes, we're doing a lot tonight, we're going to be doing a lot at the next meeting. But, Dr. Zawiki, you have anything you want to add to that?
It's at the board's discretion. My only question is, how do we handle personnel? Because when it comes to personnel, there's lots of confidential matters, so we will still maintain a personnel committee, because we can't discuss a lot of the personnel matters in public session.
There's still going to be committees. We're not going to be bored, there's still going to be committees, they're still going to report at that first meeting. But when we, but now we're going to have two weeks to understand that particular report better.
Sorry, I was confused, so you're going, we're still going to have committee meetings the first week?
Yes.
Then the second week, it's going to be a Board of the Whole report on the committees, and then the actions, so...
No, they're going to report at the, at that meeting, like we normally do.
Okay.
But no action items will be voted on. Everything else will be the same at the second meeting, only we will be voting on those action items, and those action items that were presented at the first meeting.
And then the only other question, it's not for me, I'm looking at Lynn, we have a, a big district, and so sometimes we need bills to get, to be paid twice a month, so my only, I'm good, it's your discretion, it's asking Lynn and Gal their thoughts.
You have that latitude on a temporary basis, and we will vote on it retroactively later on.
We'll adjust accordingly.
Is that understood? Any questions by the board?
Yeah, real quick, Mr. President, Ms. Jones, when you get the chance, I know you're busy, a lot on play, can you pull up old agendas prior to this being said, that we did move action items at the first board meeting? I've been on the board for 15 years, I know for a factory day, can you pull up old agendas going back 15, 13 years, just to give them to the board? I understand your point, I support it, Mr. Schlotchi, I understand what you're doing, but the fact that we're saying that we never did this before, that's the way we used to do, is simply not true. Can you just please pull up those agendas? Thank you.
It's okay with me, and you're right, we, we did. We did, Anthony, we, we've been for a long time voting on agenda items at the first meeting, that doesn't make it right.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but for the, to put on the record that this is the way we did it in the past is not true, since I've been on the board for 15 years, we've always done it, moved agenda items at two board meetings, that's all I'm saying.
If you go back far enough, you will find that...
I'm, I'm sure.
It's minimized, and it grew, and it grew, and it grew, and all of a sudden, the first, there was no workshop meeting, it became two regular meetings a month. That's not the way our board was originally set up to be. And that doesn't mean we can't change.
Absolutely.
But I'm going to bring it back to the way it was, and I think it's a healthy way for us to be responsible to the community, that we know better what we're talking about.
I absolutely agree with you, Mr. President, I just want the record to be clear that it was stated, we never did it that way, that's all.
I'm not chastising you.
No, I don't think you are either, sir.
Because I'm as guilty as anybody else, but this is the way it has to be from now on, the way I see it.
I'm fine with that.
Fair enough? Okay.
You have, Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, Mr. Robinson?
I just have a comment. We were permitted to vote on emergent things on both meetings. If something, the superintendent needed, you know, to fill a position, say, you know, police, policeman on one of the schools, or something like that, we would vote on that at the, at that moment, and say, okay, fine. It's just that all the other, you know, hundreds of things that are on these things, we would have at least time to look at them, and really look at, we're supposed to, as a board of education, we're supposed to know what the hell we're talking about somewhat.
Bill, many times, many times, we have voted on something retroactively, many times, and we will be doing that, if he has an emergency, he will cover it. Anybody else?
You go before me. Before me.
Sure.
So I, I just want to say, I appreciate the move to the work session, because I've been asking for this for a couple of years now, because as Dr. Zawiki knows, and Dr. Giadano just found out the other night, usually I'm up 12, 1:00 in the morning, reading the agenda, because I have things to do during the day, and it's, it's not fair to them that they get emails from me at 11, 12, 1:00 in the morning, maybe on a Saturday night or a Sunday, saying, hey, can you answer these questions for me? So I think it's, it's great, it'll be great for me, I don't have to sit up at night, because I do want to know what I'm talking about when I vote yes or no, so it's important that we have sufficient time to ask the questions of the right people, and not at odd hours, ungodly hours.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the only thing I would ask is, Dr. Giadano, if you can, Mrs. Jones pulling the agendas, I think everybody will admit that in the past, it's been by committee, and it's been, it's been a whole, I think we all can agree, we're just making a, a new policy change, or a new process change, so I don't know if the extra work is needed for her to prove that that happened in the past.
I'm fine with that, I just want to put on the record that it, it did happen, that's, that's all I'm saying, I, I agree with Mr. Schlotchi's trying to do, I have no issue with that, I, I just took umbrage with the fact that we put it out there that we've never done this before, and I, and I get that, and I understand that, and there were times when this district exploded, as we all know, most of us on here, where things just started moving, and we started moving so fast that it became super cumbersome, but it became an issue in 2020 where people started asking for these things, but it had been happening prior to that, that's all I'm saying, I just want the record to show that. So Ms. Jones, I will go by Mr. Sire, you absolutely don't have to pull those, that request.
I made dessert.
Dr. G, you're right. Dr. G, you're right, Ms. Jones, just make a, make a note of that, that that's, was the case. Okay, I will now open it up to the public, the comments on action items, it has to be an action item now, you will have, if it's not an action item, you will speak in the public section, okay?
Okay, thank you.
But if there's anybody else on any action items?
Martin Wells-Muller, 24th Brook, Chris Ave, Bud Lake, New Jersey. You was mentioned earlier with the fees from the tickets from the bus, all those fees and fines are being levered, is any of that going back to the Mount Olive School District to help support the schools and the buses? Because we're just generating a ton of revenue for the town, it's great for the town, but I'd like to see something come back to the schools, because they're violating the schools.
Go ahead, sir. No, I was just going to say, one of the things, the byproduct though, is the safety of the children, so...
I, I agree, but like I said, just the town to make all the money, I'd like to see something come back for the schools.
You're right, and I believe Mr. I don't want to, Mr. Creepy is looking into something that we can work, and I miss, we Matt is looking into that as well, as a finance chair, that the town would have to pass ordinance, they would revenue share that with us.
Okay, because I'm, I'm, I was so stoked when you guys put the cameras on the bus, because I get so pissed when the people pass the bus, and it's, because I've been hit as a kid going past a bus, so I know what it's like, so that's why I'm saying that I'm very stoked about this, but I'd like to see some of the revenue come back for the town. Now, I want to talk about the scoreboard for one second, you know, my question is, you guys voted for the stadium, right, that barely gets used at the sporting event, that costs a lot of money, right? How much did that cost? In the millions, correct? We've got a concession stand that sits there that only gets used for football games, so what you're saying about the scoreboard sign applies to all the other stuff that we've already spent our tax dollars on. Now, I'm at that stadium for most sports, for a lot of, for football, for lacrosse, for soccer, most time the scoreboard's just being used for football. I want it to be used for all the sports, so that's the one thing I want to see going forward from this. Not only is this going to be the varsity team keeping score for lacrosse or something, it needs to be for all of them across the board. I think there is value in getting a new scoreboard, because I've been there for the past several years looking at the old scoreboard, and it sucked, okay? It's nice to have something that we can have pride in, like we did, that, that, how much, who knows how much that stadium costs? Anyone give me a quote?
1.6, 1.7, something like that.
Okay, I know the Dome was $3.5 million, and obviously now the revenue for that comes to the town as well. So we've done this before, okay, and I, the only thing I, Reynolds did that I really liked was the Dome, because that benefited me and my kids and sports across town, but that, that benefited all sports. And I think if we turn this into the right thing, it will benefit all sports. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for action items?
Good evening, Dr. William Bradley-Haleen, Director of Student Achievement and Reporting. I'm, I'm the warm-up act, real quick, for Mr. Stansberry, but Moassa is an organization that is dedicated to doing what is right and appropriate for the student.
This is not, that, you've got to do it in the public section, this is the action items, only what we're voting on tonight. This is what, what's on the...
Is there anything on the agenda?
The minutes?
The minutes of the June 13 meeting.
There's something, okay.
That changed the minutes of June 13 meeting?
All right, go ahead, if it's not that, we'll let you know.
No doubt. This is actually the warm-up to that.
Excuse me, it has to come in a public comment, not, not right now, Brad, and I'll tell you why.
Now, I'm going to defer to Mr. Stansberry.
I understand what they're saying, but that's not an action item we're going to vote on now, okay?
Okay.
If that was, you're talking about last meeting, we're talking about the action items for this meeting, you have to say that in the public comment.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I'll be back.
I'm back. I'm not shying anybody away.
He's, he's going to have to rescind those two...
Good evening, everybody, Karen Fumera, 133 Flanders Drakestown Road, still here. I have two questions. My first one is on action item 9.10. Are the amounts on the agenda the amounts that are over the quote, or are they the total amounts spent on these items? The totals? Okay, and then I have a question about the, I don't know if it's strong or strange, and association, the performance evaluation system, what is that? Is that in addition to like our Lincoln and our 800 other things that we evaluate?
That's the teacher evaluation model, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the intellectual property fee, basically the license for us to use that. We spoke about earlier that we're putting together the DIAC, which is something that's provided for in statute to look at our evaluation model, because it's been about 10 years since it was selected.
Well, I saw, and it's, you're going with a different one, or looking to...
No, that's, that's, that's actually to pay for the way that they structured it last year and part of this school year.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I'm going to kind of piggyback on the whole scoreboard thing really quickly. First and foremost, I just want to say thanks to Dr. Gales and Dr. Mr. Sire for continuing to speak up on a substantial amount of money that has been spoken about for months and evaded, in my opinion, from over here, for many, many months. So I have a couple of questions. The first is, how many donations have been made for the scoreboard to date? And how much is in the Ed Foundation account at this point, before we talk about moving forward?
third, and then there was the second payment made, however, that was made through the lease purchase, so the payment on the lease purchase is this September, September 1st, the first of five payments.
Has it gone into production?
Yes.
Yes, in production, I think it's finished, with the exception of the logos being put on.
Are you using the same architect as the person who made the $300,000 useless touchscreen at Tince?
Are we?
Anthony Giannoficara and Giannoficara Associates has been our architect for, the people, they talked about 15, 20 years, they can tell you, I don't know, but I believe for a while. Yes.
Then I would seriously recommend maybe looking for somebody else, because there's literally a $300,000 touchscreen at Tince that is not usable, and it's gut-wrenching that that much money was spent and was not thought through further, gut-wrenching. So, my next thing that I'm going to say is more of a kind of personal note, as a parent, and not particularly a Mount Olive Sports parent, it seems like an extraordinary amount of money with a lot of, I always say this, like glitz and glamour, I take issue with things being sold at taxpayer dollars as being the grandest thing in 50 miles. If you're sitting in your school district where your children are and where you're paying taxes and you want to sell that that way, that's fine, but for me as a parent, I would like to know how much would it cost to tell a couple of teenagers to flip the boards like they used to when I was in school? Like, we're arguing over hundreds of thousands of dollars for a scoreboard that could be minimized, that doesn't need to be the most exaggerated thing in 50 miles for high school sports. I grew up in the South, I get football, I get high school football, but this is ridiculous, and we're paying for it, so I respect all of you, please, 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 get the answers that have been asked before you move forward with this any further. You have been asking for months for answers that have not been given, and have not only been not, no, evaded, and it's reeking, reeking of BS. So, that's it for my agenda item questions.
I would suspect there's somebody in the audience at the public session who will give you some answers to that.
I will be here waiting, thank you very much.
You talked about it already.
You want to answer now, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sure. Brian Schechter, Eddie Crenshaw Drive, Flanders, I was part of the Ed Foundation when we pitched the scoreboard as a revenue generator for scholarship for the students of Mount Olive. So, there wasn't any, anything of being evaded, there is an agreement between the Ed Foundation, which Anthony Giordano and myself signed, as well as Mr. Zinnimer drafted, it clearly states, and it's not that anybody was evading any questions, where are you?
I'm right here.
The answer is, quite honestly, is, the Board of Education is not entitled to any, only thing they're entitled to is for Lynn to get an accounting once a year in August of what has been collected in regards to any revenues for the scoreboard, for advertising of the scoreboard. Now, the scoreboard was delayed, I don't know, six, eight months, we're probably into supply chain issues, we haven't even put a shovel in the ground for electrical yet, so, you know, it might not even be there for the football season, so you're asking someone in a foundation to sell something, advertising space, on what is vaporware? It could take six more months to get the scoreboard installed, but the agreement is, and I'll be clear because Dr. Gales brings it up time and time again, I watch every single meeting, there is an agreement with the Board of Ed and the Ed Foundation, which I'm not part of anymore, that clearly states that the only thing that the Board has to get is in August, an accounting of what has been collected as far as revenue generation for the scoreboard, not what the whole Ed Foundation collects, and the Ed Foundation has been really great, they funded, I think, two scholarships, the high school seniors, and a trip to Poland, which didn't happen, they were wonderful in collecting the funds for that, and so, yeah, it does exist, but you guys got to stop picking on the Ed Foundation, it really is counterproductive, you should be helping them and furthering their cause, and their cause is strictly to give scholarship and help the Board of Ed in their, in their paying back the revenue. It is an asset that is owned by the Board of Ed, it's not owned by the Ed Foundation, there's not another group that uses the assets of the Board and this town that pays back the Board. The high school PTO or Football Association does not pay for the quarter of a million dollars that was spent on the snack, the snack shack, or whatever you want to call that, bathroom complex that was built, not another organization. So, guys, help support the Ed Foundation, don't come and trash them, because that's what happens here, you trash them, and there's a lot of miscommunication that's been going on, and I think Dr. Giordano was wonderful in pointing out that, yeah, there's an agreement, it still is an asset of the Board of Ed, you guys get to keep it, so if the Board doesn't pay it back, or the Ed Foundation doesn't pay it back, it's still going to generate revenue for the taxpayers, it's not going away, it doesn't fold up and move, it is here for the people of Mount Olive, just like all the other assets we have, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I knew he was home watching this, and that's what, he came in here, I knew he was, I knew he'd be here.
I just want to, just to kind of address, it's when you buy something under a pretense, which you specifically sold, and none of that is coming true.
Yes, you bought it, we haven't.
Yeah, I'm angry about it.
Every of it.
Angry at myself, don't worry about it, I voted yes, I'm angry at myself.
Chris, you don't have to worry, I mean, when it shows up and when you can actually not sell vaporware, it'll make it a lot easier for the Ed Foundation, and yeah, you know, from the conversations we've had for Kia, they're going to be a sponsor on the Board, I don't know at what level, because I haven't been, I haven't been part of that, but they're committed to signing up, as well as there's several other people, but you don't get letters of intent, you're not entitled to letters of intent, stop asking for them, you're not, you're just not entitled to it. You don't have to agree, okay?
Not on the board, we can have this conversation offline.
It is what it is.
The point, you made a good point in several things in saying this, but the reality is that the Ed Foundation was always for students, it was always meant to raise money for students, it was not meant to raise money for this, when that came up, we signed this Bayside contract, the contract had no validity whatsoever because the education foundation can fold up in a minute and we can't go after, there's nothing to go after, so, I mean, this is all, in a way, it's, we are not going to get that kind of money from the Ed Foundation, it just doesn't work that way, and the fact that they gave students money is what it's all about, and that's what it should say, being raising money for students.
Dr. Gales, yes, I'm sorry, somebody else, anybody? Anyone else out there for action items?
I would like to make a statement.
Sure.
On our finance, when we were discussing gymnastics, and I see so many gymnasts here, and I read every single letter, and I really appreciate it, one thing that I was not aware of, because after our meeting, and I am one of the ones that decided to table it for a month so I could know what was going on, I called Dr. Zawiki, and he advised me that our Board approved this seven years ago. I had no idea that happened, and I actually feel a little foolish that nobody told me, I'm glad I reached out to you and asked, I would not have made the tabling decision if I had known that, and I think we do need to communicate a little bit better and know what's going on, so I'm going to apologize, I will fight for your gymnastics plan, I think it's a great idea, I did not realize that this was already in action, and I appreciate you all coming here and writing your letters.
Lisa, you aren't the only one who was not fully informed either, and I think ownership for that, with regards to.
This was something that I did at an action item, this was from my finance meeting, I just wanted to let everybody know because.
I know, but she's going to talk about.
You can't talk about it until later. I'm sorry, I was, I was sending my decisions on my.
Thank you, we're just concerned that it's being tabled, and we're not going to get a.
Table only means we talk about it next month. You can tell us that.
Okay, I'm going to close to the public on action.
Gail would like to say something.
Oh, Gail.
Please understand it was end of year money, that purchase order has already been encumbered, what that means is the order is sitting there waiting to go out, it needs to be approved by the Board because it's over the quote threshold, so the money has already been put aside, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to close in the public. Ms. Aquino, would you please move the approval of the monthly expenditures?
Was doing that me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures and reports, action item 6.1 through 6.4.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call call, please.
Mrs. Aquino? Yes. Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Excuse me. Dr. Gales?
Abstain from anything related to ECM and Gales, yes to everything else.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes, abstain from anything.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
And Mr. Stralaci?
Yes. Dr. G.
Thank you, Mr. President, on the recommendation of the superintendent and the superintendent only, I move personnel action item 7.1 all the way down to 7.37.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is one of those that you were just talking about where I just noticed it, we have a non-budgeted $90,000 position under 7.8, and I would like to table that before we go through with a $90,000 non-budgeted position.
Which one?
Which one's that?
7.8.
Letter C.
Letter C.
Thank you. No, I just saw non-budgeted. I see, and I, you know.
Want to table C?
So, that is a current staff member who is being assigned to that position based upon student need, just so you understand.
Will we be backfilling that position, Dr. Zawiki?
I, Mr. Robinson here, Mr. Robinson can speak to the exact component of that, but it's, that's regarding a current staff member.
All right, so, so, yeah, there's a motion on the floor for Ms. Weimat. I'm sorry.
We need a second for that table, Bill seconded, call call, please.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes, to table.
Just C, though, right, Ms. Weimat?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
No.
Mrs. Aquino? Can we just have more information on that, like, she's currently working there, and we need her there now. And is it non-budgeted because her salary's increasing? And I'm not.
I believe it's the same salary. It's the same salary.
I am, my answer is no to table. Mrs. Fenton?
No.
Dr. Gales?
I'll say yes.
Dr. Giordano?
No.
Mrs. Narcisse?
I'm going to say no if there's a student need.
Mr. Stralaci?
I'd like to ask a question before I vote, I'd like to know where the $92,000 is coming from, where are we taking that money from, because it wasn't budgeted?
So, I believe it's going to come from breakage, but I'll let Gail elaborate, I'll pass her the mic.
I started tracking breakage after the budget was approved, there are several other positions that will be coming down the line that are also not budgeted, at this point, the breakage barely covers this position, because there's a lot of back and forth going on with guide movements that were not given to me, so they were not budgeted, so it takes away from anybody who leaves, so there's lots of puts and takes, if you will, and there's some that are still empty, if you will, so I may have the side that the person left, but it hasn't been backfilled, so I don't know what that breakage is.
Well, what scares me is, and I have a question later on about, but a lot of transfer money we're doing, especially a lot of it going into maintenance, and.
I can answer that question when you bring it up.
I'll bring, I'll ask that question at that time, and if that's the case, then at this time, I'll vote for tabling it.
Okay.
No. Real quick, Mr. President, real quick, I just want to clarify with Ms. Libby and Dr. Zawiki, that is the teacher's salary, we just don't know, you have to backfill her position, so if we don't backfill her position, the position is not budgeted, just the position of intervention is not budgeted, that salary is budgeted.
That's correct, her position was filled, it was filled last year.
Okay.
And so then, this position was created.
So the position is not budgeted, not the money, or both, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
The position itself is not budgeted.
But the money is there?
No, because it's a new position.
I want to clarify that, okay.
A new position, the money is not there.
Okay, that's all, I just want to make sure we clarify that, okay.
Bachi?
Yes.
So, here is a prime example of why we need a work session, because these are the kinds of questions that should be answered before we come together as a Board, before the public, the call of vote, so, thank you very much for recommending that we do a work session.
Need for students?
I ask, it's not, if a student is going to have no one, correct?
No. Okay, we're moving on then, any other discussion on any of the other personnel action items?
Are you asking for questions and comments?
Yes.
I, I do, and I will start with, I don't think I got the answer to 7.24, which is a question that I asked Dr. Giordano, and I believe you said that I could get further clarification, because we have a drill designer and a show designer at four grand, and we only have $2750 budgeted, so my question was, where was the additional money coming from?
Sorry, I was, when I saw that, I was confused, I did not understand what you, so I did not get that answer for you, Gail, do you happen to know that?
I do.
Might as well just move them down, when the budget was created, every building submits their budget, so there are direct lines that are associated with these positions on the budget submitted by the high school, and when I look at those explicit lines, they do not match up to these numbers, they match up to the numbers that I submitted as part of the explanation, so that's just to make it clear that their payments are $2,000 each, I believe, one was budgeted at $1,250 and the other was $1,500.
Where's the money coming from, to find the money from another?
What I usually tell the building principals is, they need to look within their budget and find the money, and we will have to make that transfer, but it has to come from their building budget.
I think the community can see what I was trying to get at before about confusion now, any other discussion about personnel action items?
Yes, I have, I think I have one more.
Okay.
I believe that, actually, I have two more, I'm sorry, the professional development is in personnel, correct?
Yes.
And we are sending Mr. Creefy to Alice training, and I just want to, from my own personal knowledge of Alice, I don't agree with Alice as a model, particularly the element of countering, and I would caution us against adopting Alice as a model, particularly if we're going to be training folks, training our teachers or students on countering an active shooter. All the other elements of Alice, I think, are appropriate, but the counterpart, I'm very concerned with, so I would like, and that was a question I asked, what was the guidance from the Department of Homeland Security, the DOE, and/or the Prosecutor's Office, so I guess I'll get that information as we move forward, but I don't, I don't think that voting on the PD is going to be an issue, I'm just concerned if we get to a point where we're trying to adopt this as a model and we are training folks to counter an active shooter.
So, yeah, we're not adopting it as a full model, but when you have a national best practice being shared down the road with experts, there are some things that we can glean from it, so, one of the reasons why we cannot adopt the Alice model is, first and foremost, we have armed guards, the Alice model is predicated on waiting for a 911 response, where the Alice model does work with our buildings, we have single-story and two-story suburban buildings, and so, you know, looking at Alice in terms of how things have changed based upon recent active shooters and things like that, it's to inform us, not something that we're going to buy whole hog, that's not what we're doing at all.
And for the members in the audience who don't know what the acronym is, it's alert, lockdown, inform, confront.
Come from counter.
And counter, and evacuate, we use acronyms so much, we forget.
And real quick, Dr. Zawiki, as a follow-up to that, years ago, a couple of people had brought it, Randolph had adopted it, we asked our former superintendent to reach out to Chief Beecher, he came to, I believe, a policy committee meeting, because we had to adopt the policy, if we're going to adopt that, and the Mount Olive PD and his eyes did not want to adopt Alice altogether, but law enforcement has since moved forward, saying there are aspects of the Alice model that can be taken into school districts, so, rest assured, yeah, no one should be countering, that's not what police officers. That's not what police officers, law enforcement, want teachers or administrators to do. Um, so, thank you, Dr. Gales.
And my last comment, Mr. President, is action item seven point three. I want to congratulate all of the individuals who are moving on to whatever new adventures, but I particularly want to congratulate Gwen and, and thank her for five years of service, dedicated service to the children of CMS. And it's unfortunate when we ourselves are looking for aides, that we're, we're losing a good aide and a dedicated aide, but, uh, life continues, and I just want to say thank you. Appreciate it, all that you've done, and good luck.
Make sure, and make sure you thank her from the board, too.
I think she may be watching.
Uh-oh. Mr. Scheck there, he was watching, he came in, he put his shorts on as soon as he heard the scoreboard, right? Okay, anyone, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on, I believe Lisa brought it up, about the seven-year thing. That was not brought up. I just want that to be noted, that is not brought up at our financing.
No, it wasn't.
No one ever said anything about it.
Okay.
And I didn't know anything about it.
I was gonna ask that we find that documentation, because I just did a quick search, and I don't see anything in our records. So, maybe that's something, Ms. Jones, you can do for us? Because I, I can't find it doing a quick search.
Yeah, we're in personnel, but just, just... I'm just trying to... The, the team was approved seven years ago, and I...
Oh, the team?
Was approved, and the plan for the team, and all that other stuff. And so, I see parents nodding here, right? So, we've had about a year of meetings, Ms. Soufley is not here, but I can, so, but I believe at the time, right, I wasn't here. What's been communicated to me, that was what was communicated to parents, is that those kids who were in the middle school, that by the time they got to high school were seniors, they would have home meets here at Mount Olive High School. And so, the parents were very happy to have gymnastics and went along with the placement elsewhere with the expectation that there, that the board was then going to provide the equipment so they could have home meets. And I see parents nodding. So, that's what the seven-year was. But we're in personnel right now, lest I digress, and I'm sorry, uh, Mr. President.
Okay. Please, can I have a roll call on personnel?
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes to everything but seven point eight C.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes on everything but seven point eight C.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Uh, for the last time, I abstain on seven point three. Yes to everything else.
And Mr. Strelachi?
Uh, abstain on seven point eight, yes on everything else. Okay, Dr. Gales, how about the curriculum?
I'd like to make a motion to move action items eight point one to eight point eleven.
Second. Any questions? Roll call, please. Oops, wait a minute.
I wasn't quick enough. Uh, the first Lego league is, um, is that, how's that in relation to FIRST?
Oh, me? Oh.
What is, what is the FIRST Lego league?
FIRST is the thing that, um, we do as far as like a robotics. I'm wondering, is, how is Lego, so this is just Legos, nothing with robotics?
Oh, I...
Well, this is, this is robotics at, at San Shore.
Wondering to say?
It's, it's the...
It's the same thing.
Version of FIRST. It's, it's creating a feeder program.
So, lower down.
Yes, and then, so, it's kind of like a JV league, and it could be within the building, or they actually have regional competitions as well.
And we're starting at San Shore?
I believe so.
This is for San Shore.
Double check.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is that gonna be like for every elementary, or are we just...
That's the plan.
Is this the pilot program?
Just the pilot for the shore.
So, everything will be for everybody? That's always what we're always asked, how come only not everybody else?
What are we grooming pilots now? Go ahead, Lynn, may I have roll call, please?
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes. Okay, Mrs. Weimat, finance, please.
I make a motion upon the recommendation of CCM, following finance action items nine one through nine sixteen.
Second. Any discussion, please?
Just a, a quick question. Are, are we gonna have some, a follow-up discussion about, um, wrestling? We're gonna do that in closed session?
I would, I would assume we would, yes.
Okay.
Uh, I do now, Mrs. Libby, on nine one. I see we're moving about $400,000 out of special ed and aides and child study teams. I guess that was money we didn't use, and we're putting it into, what, what do they need that in contracted services for?
Okay, part of the end-of-year projects, there was two big ones, or one big one at the high school and a supplemental one. One was to do the, um, gym floor, which we actually talked about in finance, and the planks are actually on delay due to the supply chain, so, um, we're waiting for that. But that was a project that had been put to the table and taken off to the budget table several years, so we used end-of-year money for that. That was, um, like, 370 the total? Around 370. And then there was another 40 that was to be used for a ramp in the high school, um, an ADA ramp in the high school. So, what happens is there was enough money to cover some of it, and then we needed an additional 350,000 to cover all of it. Um, at the end of the year, in any district, you will start seeing a lot of transfers. Um, it's, it's commonality, it's when things, when you feel that you can purchase things, sometimes it may be items that didn't make it through the budget. Sometimes there may be special projects that we come up with. And so, as, um, purchase orders start to close and, um, things start to wrap up, we find where there may be areas where we have some extra funds that we can, in fact, get things done. So, that's why that occurred.
I, I completely understand that on transfers, and I know we do, we use end-of-year money. My concern is, because we need aides, because we need this, is that 400,000 gonna be put back into the budget for the 22, 23?
No, so what happened here, a lot of, some of the money that comes out of this 1100217106 account, which is primarily housing one-to-one aides, um, we have several one-to-one aides that are actually funded by the districts where students are sent here from, so they're in our budget, and then they get refunded back. So, sometimes you'll see, you will see that money, like, show, like, it's, it's found money. It's just that they are budgeted for, and then we get the refunds back from the districts as they're paid. Um, there are, there is a lot of movement of aides on a continuous basis. It gives me headaches. Like, my head spins, because I'm trying to keep up with it all the time, and it, sometimes it changes daily. And I, I maintain that PCR, and so it's very difficult at times to see an aide go from one building to another, from one type to another, and you have to constantly track that. Um, so, and there's aides leaving continuously. It's, it's, it's very sad to see, it's like a revolving door. So, to say that, what, I did not decrease aide monies, if you will? If that's the question, I did not decrease. I did not add any either.
But we do have some money because as...
Aides are budgeted, there are aides budgeted for. There are aides budgeted for, there are aides who had left last year where their positions had not been backfilled yet, so those monies are still sitting there, and they rolled into 22, 23, so. And I've been, you know, I work very closely with Sharon and Debbie on that from a special ed perspective.
Mr. President and Mrs. Chair, um, as a non-voting member of the board and the CSA of the Mount Olive Township School District, I respectfully request that a member of the board add a resolution tonight, um, to support the recommendation of the athletic director and myself to purchase the Phase One gymnastics equipment so that we can get it in time, so that our students can use this equipment at the beginning of this athletic season.
Weimat?
We'll have to.
Did you want it?
We don't have to. I did not, I don't feel comfortable unless we read through this, and I'm sure that we can still provide for the students.
I, I understand what you're saying, um, we will take it up in closed session. Um, anybody else on? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Abstain on nine point one, yes for everything else.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Ask for your name on the roll call.
Yes. Um, Mr. Zire?
Uh, yes, by the recommendation of the superintendent, I'm looking to move action item ten point one.
Second. Do you have a second?
Can't, nowhere. Came in like a hurt.
That was too, that was too quick. Any discussion on that one? Roll call.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes. Thank you for your patience. Now you may get up, and it's open to the public. May you state your name and your address, please?
Jennifer Lemongello, 123 Crenshaw Drive, Flanders. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. I have the privilege of representing the, uh, MOHS gymnastics team's parents. Uh, we're here tonight, as you can see, so that everyone can hear why we should move forward with the gymnastics equipment expeditiously. This fall coming, the, the team will be in their sixth season. We've all been more than patient. The team has grown from five athletes originally to 16, even over the stretch of COVID, when everybody else was losing athletes. That is proof of their viability and their longevity. The team has waited years to get what they need to compete at their home Mount Olive High School. They've never had one full-fledged practice there, and they've never had one home meet. I can't even imagine that for any other teams that practice and compete for our high school. After meetings that I've been involved with, planning logistics and being counting, the high school athletic director and the coaches provided this board tonight, uh, the plan, but no one asked us for that before now, and that's very disappointing. What that does for us is now we have to wait another month to place the order, and it takes somewhere between six to 12 weeks to get a gymnastics floor. So, another season is going to go by where the team doesn't have what they need, which is just terribly disappointing. Um, just, you know, so everybody can hear it as well. Some think that having space at the two club gyms in town is sufficient. It's not any longer. Maybe when we were five, it was, but now that it's 16 and growing, um, they can't plan routines properly. They're subject to time constraints. Um, they can't maximize scoring opportunities if they can't get in the appropriate pla, practice time. They have less time to plan for meets as a team, and they don't get to extend a practice or to stay late to fine-tune the details. Despite every obstacle, this team has a long list of accolades, um, even with 100% being an away team. Every season, a winning record. They were league champs in 2019. They've sent athletes every year to individual state championships, and they have athletes named to the state teams for second and honorable mention every season. Four graduates compete collegiately, one you'll hear from after me. Uh, one's a Seton Hall cheerleader, one was part of the national championship Quinnipiac acro and tumbling team. Uh, we have an MOHS female athlete of the year last year, and she's competing currently at Indiana Tech, um, as a wrestler. And we also have an athlete competing collegiately in track. This team spends way too much time on the bus. Having a 100% away team represents a disproportionate time commitment from the team compared to other athletes at our high school. This can impact an athlete's academic standing. They're doing homework on the bus, on the way there, on the way back. That alone should give this board enough reason to approve the request. Competition locally is on the rise. Sparta and Roxbury both have teams now. They didn't when we started. We need to stay ahead of that and not delay this anymore. We would love to see our competitors at Ridgewood, which is over an hour away, Ramapo, more than an hour away, Wayne Valley, and other teams board a bus and drive here for an hour to come and compete at our high school. Then, these girls, every meet, they arrive home after dark. We're picking them up, it's completely dark, they've got other things to do, they haven't eaten. They don't have, they, they don't have to, you know, these other teams worry about all of that. Um, they don't even have that half their time. We have it all the time. We have ways to grow this, too. We could host JV meets, which we don't have right now as a league, uh, Special Olympics, Unified Sports. We can host leagues or regionals. Uh, this team gets less exposure also, less support from their peers. No one really knows about the team, um, outside of those that really have had interactions with them. They have fewer fundraising opportunities, and we get far less community engagement. Uh, your decisions tonight weigh on each one of these Mount Olive athletes and their families. I hope you see how driven they are when they speak and how supportive they are for one another. I hope you see they embody passion, school spirit, and great sportsmanship. Please don't defer the, the request any longer. It's a small request proportionately to what I'm hearing tonight about a scoreboard. Our score flashers are on your list, they're probably under $100, so, it sounds silly. Um, this shouldn't wait a day longer, like I said earlier. It's, another season's gonna pass them by. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1545.78]
All right. Hi, I'm Brittany Wilder, 7 Rolling Hills Drive, Bud Lake, New Jersey. So good evening, everyone. My name is Brittany, and I am a Mount Olive alumni. I graduated in 2020 and now going into my junior year at Quinnipiac University on the acrobatics and tumbling team. Back in 2017, when this team had its inaugural year, I never would have thought I would continue my athletic career to be a part of a Division One team. So my time at Mount Olive High School was not everything I dreamt it would be, but when the word came out that a gymnastics team was starting my sophomore year, it turned my entire experience around. When I heard about the team finally being able to possibly get equipment to have a more permanent practice spot, it was so exciting for me, and I was so happy for Coach Becky. Coach Becky has put in so much work for not only myself, but this team as a whole. She wants nothing more than for us to be successful, not in our, not only in our four years on the team, but as well as in our futures. Previous years, this team has never gotten the opportunity to show the student body truly how talented they are, and majority of the high school does not even know we have a team. With the addition of equipment, not only would this team be at equal advantage with other schools as far as home versus away competitions, but they would also be able to prove they are just as deserving as other sports at the high school. I encourage you to reconsider the funding for the equipment and take into consideration how important the addition of this team was to every girl and parent sitting here today. I also encourage you to display this team's accomplishments like every other sport at this school. As a record holder for every event, the all-around, and also contributing to the team's highest team score, it is disheartening to see that my accomplishments as an individual are not recognized. The team should be taken more seriously as it is capable of so much more than it has been given credit for. This team has allowed for so many more athletes at Mount Olive to be able to participate in athletics and given other athletes the opportunity to try new things. Every student deserves a chance at many opportunities to ultimately decide how they foresee their future. Thank you.
Hi, Sophia DiDomenico, 160 San Shore Road.
If you're a student, you don't have to, just for the record, you can, but you don't have to if you're a student, give your address.
Okay, did I know that? I can also just stand on my tippy toes. Okay. Okay, I was informed not too long ago before I came up here that the decision is already tabled, but I still want to be up here to inform you and educate you how important it is to us that you prioritize our team. So, hi, my name is Sophia DiDomenico. I'm a rising senior here at Mount Olive, as well as a soon-to-be four-year member of the high school gymnastics team. When I first heard that equipment was going to be included in the funding, I felt there was a sense of appreciation and support from the board being put towards our team, which we, yeah. Coach Becky has given her whole entire heart into this team since day one, and it makes me so happy to say that this team has grown so much since day one, so much so that getting equipment in our school is finally being debated. This has been one of Coach Becky's goals, biggest goals since day one. And I'm so grateful to stand up here and be a part of this equipment discussion and speak for Coach Becky's goal. For a team that started small and a team that no one truly gave recognition to at first, it was encouraging to hear that we were going to get the support we deserve. Oh. I believe that we deserve equipment in our school just as much as every other sport deserves their specific equipment. This upcoming gymnastics season will be the end of my fifteen-year-long gymnastics career. As a senior finishing out her last season ever, it would be absolutely incredible to have the opportunity to practice at my high school, the sport I put my blood, sweat, and tears into my whole entire life, literally, for the first and the last time. With having the opportunity to stand up here, I don't only, I don't only want to speak for myself, but for the team. The girls, the coaches, and the parents of this team are what make our team so successful, and I believe that our success should become properly recognized. I strongly believe the first step to gaining the proper recognition we deserve is reconsidering tabling the funding of our equipment, which is already tabled, but I wrote this before. Every parent, coach, and gymnast part of this team has done their part in this discussion for equipment. Mount Olive Board, it's time for you to do your part to better represent our sport as equally as you represent every other sport. Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Anderson, 19, Rolling Hills Drive. I just wanted to speak about this team. I've seen this team go from a struggling team of five girls who had to fight for their place among the league to what it is today. That struggling team of five who encouraged each other to improve, who had to do skills at events that they didn't necessarily want to do in order to help their teammates. They had to overcome injuries and compete with only three girls, which is just enough to make a team. And they were... Their accomplishments, their accomplishments in the face of teams of twenty girls built Mount Olive's gymnastics reputation, and it keeps on growing each year. The best part about this team is the opportunity it gives to students who can't afford to attend a club gymnastics experience. I personally was humbled to watch one of our gymnasts, who had to quit gymnastics years before, struggle to regain her skills and be an asset for our team. Every teammate rallied around her, encouraged her, built her up as she fought through the pain of reconditioning her body back to a competitive level. This team provides opportunities for all girls who would like to learn gymnastics. With their own equipment, they could expand the program to include more girls, have more opportunities for girls to try and compete. They could have skills classes like other high school teams offer and encourage younger girls to become involved and share their love of the sport. Having a home field is always advantageous. These girls deserve the ability to share their skills with their schoolmates cheering them on. These girls have been waiting for this day for years. They were so excited to see the gymnastics team have a home to call their own. My own daughters are no longer with the program, but don't doubt that this doesn't affect them. They are here in spirit, even if they can't be here physically to fight for this team. Equipment is validation for all their years of hard work for their school. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more ask on this. Can, can this be moved forward and discussed in a closed session now?
This is not a legal matter, and I don't think we're gonna go to closed session. I think we're gonna discuss it in public.
After the public participation?
After the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are some very big shoes to fill. Heather DiDomenico, 160 San Shore Road, Bud Lake. I have two daughters participating in the upcoming MOHS varsity gymnastics season. My oldest daughter, Sophia, is a rising senior and a 2022, 2022-23 co-captain, 2021 NJSI A first-team balance beam, and 2020, 2022 first-team all-around qualifier. And my daughter Lily, my younger daughter Lily, is an upcoming freshman, excited to practice and compete alongside her sister in a sport they have both learned and grown in as enduring athletes. Our family is asking for a very serious reconsideration and, and consideration for this team and the proposed equipment funding. Our varsity gymnastics team has been a model and inspiration for growth of high school gymnastics programs throughout Morris County and surrounding counties, allowing the athletes to participate in a more rigorous and competitive environment, and they've been leaders in this. After six seasons of a very successful competition, leading in several conference team and individual titles, MOHS gymnastics continues to set standards for representation and competition amongst NJSI A athletes and coaches. So really what I'm up here speaking upon is representation. So it's really, it's really time for the Board of Ed to come to fruition on its promises and its plans for MOHS gymnastics. Like we've heard, it's been seven years in the making and really give them more opportunities to, to share their, their leadership and growth. Many of the girls double up their varsity season with a club season of gymnastics, cheer, or other recreational sports. The off-site practice schedule is time-consuming and confusing, causing strain on their experience and, as, as Jen said, their academics, their energy levels. Furthermore, and especially as a varsity sport, and having practices and meets off-site separates these very hard-working athletes from the support, the cohesiveness, and the energy of their fellow student body, not to mention gymnastics is actually a very exciting sport to spectate. We are doing a disservice to our MOHS community of NJ High School athletes, athletic supporters, and parents by complicating and limiting their access to spectating. Also, onsite practices and meets allow our athletes to more effectively inspire. This is really important, because why else are we here? Really to inspire and mentor future gymnastics team participants, further encouraging the sport, the team growth, and the individual growth of these aspiring athletes. And to further discuss representation, our girls have limited, I don't, I don't know of any banner space in the high school, celebrating the hard work toward titles that have held this MOHS program as leaders for six seasons, not to mention we fully pay the total cost each season of brand-new leotard, uniforms, and warmups. Please correct me if I'm wrong in my observation, but I believe this is different from most, if not all, other varsity sports at the high school. So a question to the board. How much are we spending to rent space for practice meets and to transport athletes off-site? And what is the long-term depreciation of the obvious savings of using our own space and equipment to support this team financially by continuing to invest in short-term solutions? Short-term, seven years is not short-term. So I ask all of you, what can you do to better support our team? The parent board has a consistent and impressive legacy led by Jen and Deb in performing all of the legwork and formation and financial support. The coaches, led by Coach Becky, have brought consistent creativity in coaching four high-level events with team and individual conference titles. Together, the, the parent board and coaches offer a varsity sport that allow athletes to learn and grow within the NJSI A competition model, leading them to earn varsity letters as incoming freshmen and above, an opportunity few, if any, other MOHS sport offers. Maybe track, maybe. But is there another sport that incoming freshmen who can't even do a back handspring as an athlete come in and gain a varsity letter for their participation and representation of their school? The athletes consistently bring their high-level talent to learn and grow together, showing up wherever they are told, practicing and competing on equipment that is not their own, in a different space which is not their own, impacting the home-field advantage that other schools we compete against can benefit from. It's time for the Board of Ed to step up in supporting the gymnastics team by appropriating the equipment funds intended for them. We've done our part, and we've done it well. Them way better than me. And so my question is, what can you do as a board to support this aspiring team? Because the time's now. I think it's now. It's not really in a closed session or at a later meeting. It's now. Thank you for listening, considering the voices of our varsity gymnastics team, the coaches, the athletes, and me as a parent. Thank you so much.
Hello, Becky Nighthart, former Hopak Place. I'm the lady that holds a lot of hats. I'm a former Mount Olive graduate myself. I am a Mount Olive lifer, and my kids now go to San Shore. So I know what Mount Olive does. I know what you're capable of doing. I'm so, so proud to be a teacher here for the last eighteen years as a special educator. And now to watch my athletes stand up here in front of you, nervous as can be, to support their program and the school is hats off to the educators here as well. So thank you to all my athletes. As I said before, I'm born and raised here. I know what we can, what we've done. I've watched the town thrive academically and athletically. I'm so proud of them and everything we've done. The fact that this budget plan that I placed on your desks when you arrived is the first time you're seeing it is shocking to me, because I placed this in ed data months ago. I spent hours of my time putting every single piece of mat in ed data for it to come up to budget. And to come here and now see that this is the first time you've seen this is shocking, because I purposely put this together along with my assistant coach and the athletic director months ago. And that was an updated three-year phase where we have turned around and said, we understand that this is a purchase. This is something we've never had before, and it may take time to grow. We've been growing this for years. These athletes are fantastic. They are coming to us with extreme talent. And without the awareness in our school, I can't grow a program to even get it bigger. With the little bit of awareness that I've had, I've grown from five kids to fifteen, and I have kids that have never done gymnastics and want to come and learn. And now I, I need the staff. I need the facility. We just got an assistant coach this year, and I'm appreciative of that. As far as uniforms go, we do get competitive, competitive leotards from the board, and we are working this season to get a warm-up in the budget. So as far as that goes, yes, there is money for that piece that has been put in our budget for that. The things that I want to make you aware of is that we, right now, need to make awareness to the program. We need options for fundraising. It's impossible to fundraise and host clinics to our young athletes and our cheerleaders and people that need gymnastics as well without the facility. Our program runs in the fall season. The only other active fall sport that we have indoors is girls volleyball. We are wasting our facilities and our indoor space with only one sport using our facilities. We have the space for this sport. The other thing I'd like to bring to the attention is that many of these athletes do practice two hours and Saturday practices. I am limited to what is available to the two programs that we do have, CS Gymnastics and Northernly. We are fortunate enough that locally, we do have two amazing facilities to be able to bring our athletes to. At this time right now, I put together a schedule and hoped that we were gonna get more equipment. I'm getting more hours for my kids as they're asking and requesting for it. I have sixty hours on our schedule for next season, starting in late August. Our current schedule is, has a rental fee of about a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to rent space with a sixty-hour practice schedule for the season. That puts us at about a rental of nine thousand dollars a season. The budget that we're asking is minimal compared to that, and if we would have started this from the plan at the beginning, we almost would have had half of it paid off already. So I'm just asking that you do reconsider this, and I'm glad that I was able to print this and bring this to everyone's attention, because it sounds like what you were saying, if this, you know, your plan and your process of having that opportunity to ask questions could have eliminated this. And now, because of this being a delay, this could have been emailed to you immediately when that question was posed, and we could have voted on it today. And instead, we are now waiting, and now my athletes may not have what they need in September. And that's a concern for me, especially when you're hearing about delays and processes, and this was already proposed months ago.
So all your work was, it came through me, through the athletic director, and it's on the agenda from the March sixteenth budget meeting. I did bring this forth to the budget committee on March sixteenth, and it's the number-one item for my wish list for end-of-year spending. So I did hear you, or your work was for nothing. I did bring it to the board on March sixteenth.
Thank you. I, I just want to also bring to the attention, the understanding of what gymnastics is, because it's a unique sport that's different than football and other athletics. Our league is in need of having facilities that are able to host these meets. As we said, we had Sparta just recently added, and Roxbury just recently joined our league. The only Morris County team that has Mount Olive or gymnastics equipment is Randolph. And we have been in constant contact with their athletic directors as we were creating these plans. How do you store the equipment? Where does it go? What do we need? Which, what training do our grounds and facilities need to make sure that this is safe? We have diligently really worked hard on putting together these plans. So if there are any further questions, as I said before, I'm also employee of the district, please feel free to reach out to us on that. Because we do not have a facility, that forces us to be in what's called a try-meet. When you're entered in a try-meet, that means you compete against two schools at the same exact time. When you compete against these two schools, your scores only count once. That's putting all of our athletes at a disadvantage. Where other schools are getting ten opportunities to qualify for sectionals and states, our kids get six. As my team is growing and I'm only allowed to put five kids up on an event, that gives them less opportunity for more athletes to qualify. So we are in dire need of this for our school, the support, the league. It's growing. So I just ask that, you know, you take into consideration with more information, I think now that you have put forth in front of you, to support this and put this in motion to get this approved for our athletes. You can see it's in their heart. It's in my heart. I cheered in high school because they didn't have gymnastics, but I was a gymnast. So I had to choose another option. We have kids that are gymnasts as well, and I want them to shine. This means so much to me personally, as an educator, as a community member, and of course, to support my, my athletes here. So I want to thank you all for your support, and please feel free to ask any questions that are needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Libby. You said we have appeal ready to go?
Yep.
The purchase order has already been put through the process. It's sitting out there. It's ready to go. It's...
It needs approval, correct?
Right.
It needed board approval because it was over...
Make a motion to, to move the gymnastics equipment?
By second class?
You can't do that during a public, but we will, we will when the public's over. Hang in there.
Give other people opportunities to speak and have the gymnastics keep coming up.
Hi, Jeanne O'Neil, forty-six, Karen Place. I just felt, I know you mentioned aids, and I felt it was just my responsibility to say, I hope that, I know Dr. Gales knows, because at our last CPIC meeting, we are in desperate need of aids and good aids and aids that will stay. And I absolutely respect everybody else's wants and needs, but for some of our kids, they can't even come to school without an aid. And I really would do anything to help to make it, you know, possible to find aids, and I know a lot of parents have done research and sent me, and I think, I think we sent them to the board already. I'm not sure yet. Like comps from the area and who, who is hiring aids and what they're hiring them for and, you know, trying to fix the problem. But we just keep talking about it, and it doesn't seem like it's, you know, being taken as serious as it needs to be for, for some of our kids. And I know that I would feel terrible if I just left it at that and didn't say anything, so I just wanted to say it again. It's, and some of our kids can't stay a whole day or can't participate in anything if they don't have the aid. And without an aid, they can't do that.
Thank you, Jeanne.
Here's what's gonna happen, folks. We're going to, I'm going to close it to the public at this time. We are going to have a motion at this time. Here, then I've had a request for a five, ten-minute bathroom break, and then I'm gonna open it back up to the public again. So at this time, it's closed to the public. And we have a resolution to read here. Go ahead, Chris.
Well, no, no, that's...
No, no, we gotta do it in...
Motion to move the gymnastics equipment?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Well, Chris has a resolution. Okay.
All right, let me go ahead and read this, and we're gonna make this what?
Make it an administrative resolution, ten point two.
Ten point two? Okay, hereby resolved that the board hereby approves the Mount Olive High School gymnastics equipment and facility three-year phase plan, including the fundraising necessary to implement the plan from the 2022 to the 2023 school year.
Second?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure, because the concern was from Mr. Miller as far as storing equipment and just different, and talking about containers. And this is the first time I'm seeing this. I wish we have, would have seen this at the finance meeting. Thank you, Becky. Thank you for this. This is a lot of information we did not have at the finance meeting in order to make any kind of going forward or make it, and if you heard me read the questions, the questions were, we had a question about this, a question about that, and first time we're seeing this.
Do you have else? Okay.
I just wanna congratulate all of the, the young athletes who came up and their parents. They all did a very nice job. It's, it's a little disappointing to know that information is out there and conversations were being had that were not being had with every member of the board. So I don't sit on the finance committee. I don't sit on the budget committee, and this report... and this report is the first time I'm seeing this information. And it's not fair to us, and it's not fair to you, it's not fair to the coach. So if you were having conversations with whomever in administration, those conversations were not getting to us, and that's why it was being tabled. Not because we didn't support the program, but rather, we had questions, just like we had questions about the scoreboard, just like many folks had questions when we purchased these buildings. And when we talk about making rash decisions about projects, that would be irresponsible with taxpayer dollars. So, so I want to applaud you, and I think, I think that's it. I think gymnastics is a wonderful sport. Always impressed by things that I can't do, and there are a lot of things that I can't do. So, and I'm impressed by your poise and your commitment to gymnastics. Don't look at the tabling as we don't support it, just rather, we had questions before moving forward. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Norcees?
Yes.
Mrs. Wmet? Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Shalachi?
Yes.
Has passed. Your purchase order will go through. 10-minute recess. We'll come back and open it up to the public again.
Whatever you gotta do to keep yourself.
Why isn't my chair so low?
All right, we're back in session, we're back in open public meeting.
We'll make sure we talk into the mics. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. William Bradley-Hellain, and I'm the Director of Student Achievement and Reporting. Mount Olive Administrators and Supervisors Association is an organization that is dedicated to doing what is right and appropriate for the students of the district, as well as for the staff and the public. Our concern for ourselves only stems from what we observe and know is best for students, staff, and public. We are not afraid of hard work. We respond to our superiors' needs and carry out our jobs in an exemplary manner. In the few instances where there have been an egregious mistake that one of our members has committed in past years, we answer in a positive ethical manner, again with the consideration of students, staff, and community first, not ours. I've been a member of Moassa since 2002. In this time, I do not remember ever needing to take a stand either publicly or privately in order to protect the membership or prevent something that we as an association have grave concerns about. Again, our focus has always been on the students, staff, and community first. All of this to say that if you're seeing us go to the microphone and make a point, there's a good reason for it. From Mark Mongan to Rosalou Lamonte to Larry Reynolds, and even Anthony Gennella, we have never felt the need to come to the microphone to make a public statement about an action item. We do not pressure you to tell you how to vote. We did not, I'm sorry, we did not presume to tell you how to vote, only that we feel there should be further investigation into what you're considering voting on. Please take the time when we ask to investigate these instances and then vote in a future meeting. If your investigation inclines you to vote consistent with your original intentions, then that is truly what is best for Mount Olive. Another reason for us taking the microphone is to do what I am doing right now, when there is something we feel you should all be made aware of, what better way from the source to you, the full board at one time? We all realize that the job you do is not easy, and the service that you do comes at an expense from you or to you. For that, we are all grateful, and to that end, Mr. Stansberry is going to follow me with information we would like you to consider. Finally, however, I have been made aware that some of your votes on administrative moves are based on upcoming retirements. I know of no member of Moassa that is ready to retire this year, other than me as the old man of the group. And as I stand before you now, as an active member now, it is my intention to stand in front of you the first meeting of January 2023 as an active member. 2022 is not my year. 2023 is a different year. Pray for the economy. Thank you for your time and have a nice evening.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Stansberry, and I've been a member in good standing of the Mount Olive Administrators and Supervisors Association for 26 years, and I've served in numerous administrative capacities, and I currently serve as the elected Vice President of the Association. I wanted to thank the Board of Education members who acknowledged our request at the June 13th meeting and let you know how much we appreciated your understanding and your support. We were certainly disappointed by the outcome as there are conflicts with what is transpiring with Action Item 10.1 from that same meeting. We would like to respectfully request of the Board of Education to revisit and rescind the following action items from the June 13th meeting. I will go slow. Action Item 9.6. We have significant reservations as we do not feel that the Mount Olive Township Board of Education's best interests are being served or addressed. Communications and correspondences from our association have not been shared with the members in a timely manner or at all, which would make clear the intentions of our requests and justify our concerns. This line of conveying the conditions of our work environment, treatment as professionals, and focusing first and foremost on the well-being and development of the students in our charge has been deliberately silenced and blocked. We also have concerns about the intricate thread that exists between 9.6 and other places of employment in other districts as it presents a conflict of interest. Understanding that it's a free market, but in this particular case, we care about what's happening at Mount Olive Township School District. We would also like to take note that we have been offended and insulted by the characterization of pestilence and laziness. I can attest that none of the members of this association are that, and for those who have seen the work that we've done year after year, you would have to agree. But that's how we were characterized recently. I would also like to have Item 7.6 revisited and rescinded. Job descriptions in the conflict in the sense that the approval of the job descriptions and the appointments took place in the same evening, which is highly peculiar. 7.7, the organizational chart, as this is the fourth realignment, a minimum of a fourth realignment in the last three years. 7.12, letters H, I, and J, especially the principal slash director hybrid post, which is educationally unsound, unfair to the students and staff of Mount Olive High School, and unfair to the individual. And as noted by Dr. Hellain, there are no pending retirements to justify that hybrid position, especially in a school and a district our size. Again, we are requesting these rescindments as Action Item 10.1 from the June 13th agenda has not been completed, resolved, and currently these actions during this timeframe are in direct conflict with the process and appropriate protocols. We would also like to respectfully request of the Board of Education to rescind the following action item from tonight's agenda. Action Item 9.3, the audit, and Action Item 10.1, the independent investigation, as these are also in direct conflict with Action Item 10.1 from the June 13th meeting. Again, we greatly appreciate your time and your consideration. It's been an amazing journey for us to all work for this district, but we need to take this opportunity to raise our concerns. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Susan Breton. I am the Director of Social Emotional Learning and College Career Readiness for the Mount Olive School District. First, I'd like to begin by expressing my thanks to the Board of Education. Last week, I attended a meeting, a conference actually, in Austin, Texas for 50 women leaders from across the United States. The large majority of these women at the conference were school superintendents, with a few of us being central office directors. The purpose of the conference was to celebrate and share and learn together as women. We discussed student achievement, their growing concern of mental health and wellness of students, and the recruitment and retention of educators, which, as we all know, is a serious issue. These women represented some of the largest school districts across the United States, as well as some of the poorest school districts, with 100% of their student population receiving free lunch. The commonality among us was the dedication, excitement, and desire to serve our school community, giving everything we have as professionals to ensure that our children have access to quality education and services that promote wellness, not only physically but mentally. I left feeling inspired by their stories and solutions and had a deeper understanding of what problems other districts face post-pandemic. I was proud to represent Mount Olive, and I believe that I added knowledge and expertise in my area to the conference. And again, I'd like to thank you for supporting me with this professional opportunity. When I arrived back home at work late last week, I must admit that I was feeling sad because I knew that I was returning to a level of angst and frustration that had been weighing on Moassa administrators for quite some time. To become aware that we were recently characterized as folks who are not open to change, paraphrasing sour administrators, or somehow that were just upset about one or two issues is simply untrue. I think it's important to note that the educational leaders of Moassa are professionals who have all have advanced degrees, with some of us have completing doctoral educations or doctorates that are in progress. These degrees require a level of learning and dedication that is simply a testament to work ethic and grit. Many of these degrees are being completed while we are balancing a very full work and home life. We are not lazy individuals, we are not unwilling to work, and we are not unwilling to collaborate or be close to new ideas. I would like to point out that many of the administrators you know, not simply because of their name or title, but because some live within the community, or have been your children's principal or coach, or may have taught you in school, or because for many of us, we have worked for the district for years. For as long as I can remember, there have been always been a very respectful and very friendly relationship between the Board of Education and Moassa. We have supported one another through celebrations and some very hard times. Many of us have a decade of longevity, with some of us having over 20 years' experience within the district, and that's a pretty long time. And in my opinion, should have some weight in addressing the concerns and should speak to the level of dedication that we have to this community. Moassa leaders are some of the most dedicated, resilient leaders and educators that you will ever find. As a group, we have different viewpoints, differing philosophies, and different areas of expertise within education. In fact, we even have disagreements sometimes, and that's okay. We have always collaborated, discussed concerns and ideas, and respected one another from a professional and personal level to ensure we get it right. When we make mistakes, we support one another to ensure that we stay on the right path. Dignity and respect in a workplace is paramount. We know who we are, we understand the community, and we want to continue to have the best schools for our children. It is my hope that as Board members, you truly value us as leaders in the work that we do. In my 13 years within this district, and in my 30-plus years of educational experience, I have never felt as concerned as I have today. The climate and culture of a school district impacts all levels of an organization. When it's not healthy, it jeopardizes school improvement, it fractures relationships, and it breaks trust, which is the backbone of any organization. Students and staff can suffer at all levels, with often unseen consequence. What we are asking for is that you just seriously consider the concerns that we have brought before you and to wait on making organizational decisions until Action Item 10.1 from the June 13th meeting is complete. This allows the entire Board to understand the concerns from all parties in a fair and equitable manner and to make an informed decision and plan on how to move forward in a positive direction. And we need to move forward in a positive direction for all of us. In the time that I've been employed by the Mount Olive District, Moassa has never had to come to the Board meetings to ensure that our concerns were heard or believed. We are asking you to do the same thing that you would ask us to do if a stakeholder came to us. I hope that you recognize that we are not taking the action lightly, and I would just ask that you really address the concerns that we have. I appreciate the time that you have given me today, and again, I do want to say thank you for the conference. It was really amazing. So, thank you.
Hello. My name is Amy Marini. I live at 3 Melissa Trail in Long Valley, but I have two children that are out of district placed here in Mount Olive. I'm also the VP of the Special Education Parent Advisory Group that Mrs. O'Neill speaks about monthly for you guys. I am not typically a scripted person, so I wanted to at least address and speak with you guys about a couple of different topics that pertain to special education. And so, you know, hearing many times, as I've come to the Board meetings and listening to the different sporting events speak about their different needs or their different things, and then hearing different finances being shifted, sometimes found money, if you would, from special ed, it hurts my heart. You know, and so I know that, you know, AIDS, people have been talking about this often, that, you know, the need for any classroom aid, honestly, both my children require one-to-one aids, one of which went without for three months. And so, you know, I know that right now AIDS is part of their contract and all that stuff. We've discussed this at CPEG, but I wanted to just address all of you guys to make sure you understand the impact, that the kids need their aids. They require their aids. Their aids are basically an extension of the teacher, the parent, the nurse, the therapist, everybody. And, you know, what Mrs. O'Neill said about, you know, some kids potentially can't come to school if they don't have, or they'll have a really bad day at school, or, you know, it impacts if a behavior plan isn't followed, you know, and ultimately, some of those things may come back from a legal aspect, come back and affect the Board. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody's kind of paying attention to some of these aids and the situations that the aids and the need of the aids because they're an important piece to the entire function and the cogwheel of how the students, how successful the students are in school. So, that's just aside on that part. The other thing is that, you know, Mount Olive, and I know that Mrs. Dayzac was amazing in creating the Unified Program and making sure that it was up and running and everything like that. And as a mom that has sat through two extremely long Board meetings with all of the sports recognitions, I just ask that, it's, I know, not you guys, but can the Unified Students please go first? Because I feel as though, I'm glad, I'm glad, thank you, because I feel as though, you know, those students will always clap for every single child, and then when they have no recognition. So, thank you.
You say your child, was the IEP plan call for your child to have one-on-one aid, and they were without it for three months?
So, I know that, so there was accommodations made, and there was someone there, but it didn't, it, my understanding is that the teacher acted as the aide.
We were out of compliance.
That's why I stand here.
We should have known about that, but we didn't know about it. So, thank you for coming to tell us.
Well, I don't know that I'm the only one, you know, and so, and I don't think that it's anything that Deborah Sharon are doing. I think that they're trying really hard. Like I said, some of it's staffing, right? I recognize that it's really hard to find staff, and I realize that we also pay peanuts. And so, you know, some people could go to Kohl's and make way more than they would here, and that's, it's frustrating, I think, from everybody's standpoint, that it's super frustrating, and I feel as though, from a mom, right, I feel that these students, like, I completely respect my kids' aids, you know, and I don't know that everybody does, you know, and so, I, it's just, it's, they are so important to all of the kids' success, be it a classroom aid, be it a one-to-one aid, be it a two-to-one aid, you know, and, you know, and so, and having an aide that is well-trained, that wants to work with a certain particular population, is just so important because, you know, there could be other issues, and maybe there's bullying that's happening that potentially an aide may have stepped up and helped to make sure that that didn't happen, and if that aide isn't interested in being with that kind of student. I mean, I particularly had some situations where the aides, they're not made for the empty population, and so, trying to recruit and retain is so huge and important, and so, I ask that you guys, you know, take that into consideration, and thank you for, you know, pointing out about the Unified Students, so.
We can't recruit and train if we're gonna move $400,000 out of that special ed thing and put it into contracted services. It can't happen. That's why I asked the question before. We're gonna after aides for three years. We need aides. If we gotta raise the salary, let's raise the salary. It's more important, the money first has to go to the classroom. Everything else comes after that. Thank you.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You might like me a little less the second time. Karen Fumara, still 133, Flanners, Texas, 100. So, I had a list, and I'm gonna do it in opposite order, just in light of a couple other things. So, as I did at the last meeting, I am going to voice the deepest support for administrators that I respect more than I could ever express to you. They are not only the people who show up for our children, but they are, and specifically one in particular, is the one who manages me when things are going less than likely, and he sees me far more often than you guys do. And he deserves nothing but, not only the Board's respect, but his superior's respect, his colleagues' respect, and certainly the communities. So, I will say that on behalf of all of you, because I'm sure that you all deserve it. I just know a couple, you know, one-on-one personally, but I still have such tremendous respect for what you do, and I can't even imagine what it takes to have to stand in front of the Board of Education and speak so eloquently but so veiled, like, I, to not be able to say what you need to say and to have to find the words to say it so perfectly. I'm disgusted that that has to happen. That makes me sad because those are the people that work to make my children happy, so their happiness is directly in connection to my children's happiness, and if they're not happy, that is going to trickle down. So, please, please hear what they say, please, because it's just not okay. So, as a parent, I will do the same thing with whatever value it has, and ask you also to rescind from June 13th meeting Action Item 9.6, 7.6, 7.7, 7.12, H, I, and J, until the investigation of 10.1 is complete, and to also rescind July 25th, tonight's Action Items 9.3 and the 10.1 investigation, for whatever that's worth. I appreciate you guys, so thank you for all you do. My list that started before that was, the first thing I wanted to say is I forgot on the action items to say thank you to Dr. Gales for Action Item 8.7, kind of proactively speaking to what parent concerns were going to be about the upcoming curriculum development for the health education. So, thank you for that, being proactive and getting ahead of me. I appreciate that. The next thing on my list was, was money found for the aides that Mr. Schalaci has been asking for? And what is the consequence on the district for the lack of aides because it is a violation of IEPs? And what is the game plan to make sure that we hold on to aides? Proper training, proper support, proper pay, and whatever else is necessary. Violating those IEPs is obviously detrimental to those students, but it's detrimental to the classroom. It doesn't just impact special education. It has a huge ripple effect to the regular education classroom as well and the gen ed class. And so, on behalf of special education and the entire student population, what is the consequence of how many violations are we in? And is somebody, I know we self-report to Q-SAC, but clearly, we're not reporting accurately if stuff like this is happening, and you guys don't know about it. That's a problem. My next question was, are the results of the June 13th meeting, Action Item 10.1, completed and given to the Board of Ed? And my last one was to thank Mr. Schacter for, I think I said his name correctly, for clarifying some issues on the Ed Foundation and other things. I have said this before, I think one of the things that's very, very frustrating is, as a parent who's trying to be involved, it's very difficult to be involved when information is hard to come by. It's very difficult. So, I will again say, please, please put the effort into that community outreach program. So, I will again say, please, please put the effort into that community outreach program, because there are a lot of things that I think we should know more about. There should just be better information given. And, and, you know, I know some of these things have been in the pipeline for years and years, but when it comes to a head, you feel like an idiot standing here, that you have no idea that this stuff is happening, and that just seems sinful. So, with that, I still thank you all very much for your time and effort, but that's all I got. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And I'm back. Martin Wells Muller. I have a question about, I'm not asking you to rescind anything, but I want to thank you for adding 10.2 today, for approving the girls' gymnastics. I think it was very important. I know some of those girls from, my daughter from cheerleading, and if it would have been a boys', boy sport, I think it would have already been paid for, it would have already been done, and I think it was just long overdue, and we got to give recognition for those young girls. I've known Sophia since she's like seven years old, she's come to my house more times in a boot for hurting herself in gymnastics, so I'm really proud you guys took the steps to correct the inactions by some, and then to vote unanimously to approve it. That's number one. Number two, on 10.1, normally you have a cost associated with investigations, I don't see any numbers associated with that, I'd like to find out if there's a cap, and what, and if we can know about that? Because even last month, you did have a dollar amount set aside in previous investigations.
We did not put a cap on tonight's resolution, because we are just not clear on what the cost will be at this point, so.
Okay.
No cap on that.
All right, and what is Moab exactly? I heard that mentioned four or five times, I don't, I'd like to get, educate myself.
The administrators' union.
Is it common for a union to come speak? I thought they only do stuff during contract negotiations?
Anyone's allowed to come to public meetings, this is the first time, my experience, that Moab has come and spoken at a board meeting.
Okay, all right, that's about it, but like I said, it'd be nice to know if we have a cost factor there, and I want to thank you for proving the things for the girls. But like I said, if this would have been wrestling, the mats would have already been ordered, this would have been baseball, the bats, and bases would have been ordered, there would have been wrest, you know, I mean, any other sport would have already been here, and I think that we should really make sure we pay for all their uniforms, and give the girls pride, like we do the band, like we do for cheerleading, like we do for football, and to put that money aside for them, because they do matter. And I'm not saying you guys don't think they matter, I know they matter to you guys, but we got to put it for it and show them that they matter. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close it to the public, but our attorney has some rebuttal he would like to.
I just wanted to address some of the resolutions that were identified by Mr. Stansberry. First of all, 9.6, which dealt with my firm's reappointment, I wanted to say on record that I take very strong exception to any claim that I have not been fully transparent with this board, that I have not shared information of a legal matter with this board in an expedited and timely manner. So, any claim to the contrary is completely unfounded and false. I also take strong exception to any claim that I've had a conflict in dealing with this Board of Education, so again, wanted to go on record with that as well. As to the other resolutions, 7.6, I suppose the board could rescind that. The problem is that without the job descriptions, we currently have people occupying those positions, so it would be an incredible anomaly to have folks doing the job without a job description, so it would be my legal advice not to rescind that. As to the reorganization resolution, 7.7, again, there's folks that have been moved into those positions, so to rescind that resolution would necessarily require the board to transfer people back to their former positions. And I would kick it back to Dr. Zawiki on this, but as we all know, under 18A 27-4.1, the board can only transfer, reassign, remove, appoint, and so forth, as a personnel item with the recommendation of the chief school administrator. The board cannot do that without the superintendent's recommendation. So, again, if Dr. Zawiki wants to recommend it, certainly, he can do so, but the board cannot on its own legally make that resolution. And the same thing would go with 7.12, which involved appointments of certificated staff, because basically you'd be removing them. And then for the resolutions for tonight, 9.3 and 10.1, I would strongly recommend against rescinding those two items, and I can certainly elaborate further in closed session on any of the things I just talked about, so.
That's it, Tom.
Okay.
It's not a debate.
No, but it may look fine.
Not a debate.
Okay. Anyone from the board have any comment?
Out.
Whatever you wish.
Are we doing what comments then?
Comments.
Yep. You're on, well, first we have to go to old business. Is there any old business? Any new business? Let me, let me have now some board comment. I'm not going to call on anybody, if just anybody has a comment. I have nothing. You have nothing. Doc, you?
Oh, I always have something. And I'm going to start with, just saying some names. Donovan, Gloria, Caitlin, Justin. The first four have been extremely well. One who is interning in New York City, Robin Hood Foundation, another who is at Case Western doing cancer research, another who's an orientation team lead at a university, another one who is excelling interning as a chef, and was part of the team that catered Obama's birthday last year. The thing that they all have in common is, not all of school districts, and the administrators and teachers, some of whom are sitting in this audience. So, as I was thinking about all of you, I came across a, a blog from, who was the guy? Scheninger, remember him? We, we actually brought him into the district, and I voted no for it, but we brought him into the district. And, and not because he had no value, I just didn't see the, the need to spend 40 grand, but be that as it may, he came into the district, and I, and I came across his blog, and I just wanted to share this with you guys, because sometimes you need to hear that you matter, and that you made a difference. That's why I mentioned those names. I just want to share with you some excerpts from his blog very quickly. When he says, "I was in awe by what I saw," and this says a lot, "as I spend so much time working in schools across the United States and the world. Over the past 10 years, Mount Olive High School was designed and built with relevant learning experience and kids in mind. As a parent, I would love for my kids to go there, and I can't even begin to imagine how proud the community is of what has been accomplished." And this article was written seven, oh, January 27, 2019. Then he listed all of the things that we have accomplished. Science classes with wall-sized dry erase boards, giant Scrabble board, drunk-driving vehicle simulator, biological habitat at the high school, mate in the practice tank, robotics with the CNC and plasma cutter, the recording studio, and the theater, the mill, the dome, the stadium, the geodome. And he says, "I cannot stress enough that leadership from every level made this transformation happen," and epitomizes a shift from, yeah, yeah, but, to what if. Central office administrators work to make funds available using creative approaches that continually generate revenue outside the budget. Finally, I was equally impressed with the teacher leadership, their willingness to push the envelope and make learning relevant while challenging kids to think. And we can learn a great deal from the successful outcomes at Mount Olive High School to empower other districts and systems to design and build schools that kids appreciate and want to attend. And I wanted to share that with you, because again, sometimes you just need to hear that you're relevant, and you made a difference, and we hope that you will continue to make a difference. And whatever adversity that we're facing, we hope that we can come to an amicable resolve collectively. Thank you, that's it.
Anyone else?
I have something, Mr. President. So, I appreciate you quoting Eric Scheniger. I would, I agree on all those comments, and that's why this district has had such a storied legacy, and I spoke about that at our Model Schools conference presentation. And the theme of that presentation was informed by the work we did with Dr. Tyrone Howard. And the theme was that although Mount Olive, all those things that you just said, we have amazing facilities, amazing programs, extremely high-performing because of the work of all these individuals, and by the way, we're the highest performing we've ever been, that there was an underbelly. And I first brought it to your attention in 2018, when you looked at our ESEA accountability report, when you look at our subgroups, the graduation rates of African-American males, the math proficiency of special education students, the English proficiency of special education students, the graduation rate of special education students. And so, while all the things you said are true, there are other issues, and so, it's up to me to bring those to your attention. We've made great strides, and we celebrated that, and I hope you all looked at the Model Schools presentation to do that. But that being said, you know, when folks are getting promotions and raises, which they all did, no one was coming and complaining when I was, when I was promoting them and giving them raises. But when I do things like, can we look at this spreadsheet from March of this year that has blindly recommended special education minority students for the lowest-level classes despite the internal data that we have? When I am the person who's directed by the board to hold people accountable for unbecoming contact, conduct, that's part of my job, right? And now, the timing of everything is very coincidental to me, that there are all these complaints and grievances, when there were none before March. There were none before March. So, yes, Dr. Gales, everything you said is true, but everything that's here is also true, and it's why we have the Equity Task Force. And when Dr. Tyrone Howard put up our civil rights data collection data in September of 2020, and you were with me when I spoke to him at Model Schools in May of 2029, I'm sorry, May of 2019, when I begged him to come to the district, but we couldn't get him booked until 2020, he said to me, he goes, "Do you really want me to show this data? It's really going to pop the bubble." That historically, when you look back, who was suspended in Mount Olive High School? Students of color, students who earn free reduced lunch. So, yes, we have a storied reputation, and I love when we have statistics that are in the 90th percentile, and 92% of kids do this, and 93% of kids do that, we have to worry about 100% of kids. And sometimes that means we have to have uncomfortable conversations, and I have to hold people accountable. That's part of the job, and you guys take an oath to support me in doing that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Liz, you go first. No, no, you go, you raise your hand first.
I wanted to thank, well, you're, this is closing comments, though. Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to thank everyone. Lynn was kind enough to send us the BOE candidates list, and it's always nice to see people on the candidates list. I want to thank all those people who put forth to be running in November. Also, I don't know how much we thank, like, the cafeteria staff. I know they were out there during COVID, they were out there with so many different things, and I think it's really nice that we should just, I always like to recognize everybody, but when I think somebody needs a little bit more, I think they need a little bit more, so I, I want to say something about the cafeteria staff. And I'll send it to you, Dr. Zawiki, somebody just sent me information about a virtual cookbook, that they, it's an interesting kind of concept.
Sounds great.
And, you know, I don't know how much that would involve Dr. Granger with a virtual, since you virtual, so, you know, I'll, I'll send you all that information. Also, the John Lennon Foundation, I know we have our own recording studio, somebody sent me this, I was just impressed, because I saw Yoko Ono in the front picture, and she's also involved in this, and they, it's, I guess, they bring it to each of the, they bring it to schools, so I guess, instead of like, each class going into the recording studio, this would be more of a, but I'll send you all that information, also, someone wanted, you know, they were just interested in that, and again, it was just somebody that said, "Hey, I saw this, would you mind," you know, and I said, "Well, I can bring it to the board," you know, I, no one, not one of us makes a decision, but, you know, bring it to get to the board, so anytime there's anything new and different, like when I told Rebecca, when I went to TCNJ, you know, with the, the drones and the underwater, and now there's arc welding, they tell me, with underwater, with me, so it's kind of neat that you see all these different things going on. So, anytime I see something, I just want to bring it forward to everybody, and I'll send you that.
Please do.
That you can have that, okay. And thank you to everybody, you know, you know, just, again, working together, I think we're on a better path, as you had said, with going, you know, going back to the way we did the two meetings, which I think is very important, because communication is the most important thing, you know, and I can't go on after him, because I also had four kids that had you guys, so, it's like, you know, he's got more, he has one more. Thank you, you know, because, and Mrs. Stansberry, you know, we go way back with 20 years, you know, my kids, I was always impressed that you knew every kid's name and every year of anybody that passed you in high school. My kids were always impressed, they said, "Does he remember everybody's name?" But, you know, I just wanted to, just to shout out, you know, for, you know, for everything that everybody does, all our staff members, you know, whether it's building grounds and behind you, whether it's administrators, it's the aides, it's everybody, and I think that's an issue we need, as Mr. Shalachi had said, we need to do something about the AIDS situation. You know, it's, I know it has to do with collective bargaining as a whole, it's not that easy just to say, "Yep, we're going to do this," but I think if we have a plan of action in place of how we need to address this, that would be the first step.
Right.
Thank you.
Ms. St.
Yep, I wanted to actually say thank you to all of the gymnasts and their association that came out tonight. Sometimes, again, a lack of communication and information causes us to make errors or to vote a certain way, so their information was missing from our meeting, again, with the phase-in plan that we were missing. Had we had it ahead of time, I think, you know, decisions would have made that, been made that were different. I want to say thank you for the concept of going to a workshop on the agenda, I think that would be very helpful. There's a lot of questions that I have, everybody knows I ask a lot of questions, they come up, we're, you know, scrambling, so thank you for that. Ms. Breton, I wanted to say, look into the book Lean In, it's a women empowerment by Sheryl Sandberg. We have a group over at my company, I'd love to share with you how we do women's empowerment in the business place and in education, as well as look into the book Grip by Angela Duckworth. Those are my suggestions. I also want to make sure that the public understands that we, as a board, have a code of ethic, and our job is a little unique, and we're supposed to uphold and enforce all the laws and regulations of the school board. We also make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of all children, not just of, you know, all of the opinions that get thrown at us, we have to think of the children first. We also have to carry out the responsibilities, not to administer to school, but together as a board, which, you know, we seem to need to be working on, and I think we are, but to ensure that they're run well, and in conjunction with our chief administrator, the superintendent. We are to be working as a team, and I think there seems to be a bit of public view that there's, you know, a lack of understanding of what our actual rules are as we're getting fired things. That actually comes, all those come from our code of ethics under the NJSA 18A 12-24.1.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I take exception to the, what was said about the special education and so forth before Dr. Zawiki came. We created this school from one of the lowest, 20% in Morris County, to the top 8% in the nation, and the way we did that was, we aimed at children. We took all comers, whoever walked, stepped into this school, we took them, everybody had the same opportunity. Now, we have had, you know, you're speaking of special ed, we had a black special education chief administrator, so, I mean, it's not like we've never had black people here, we've also had teachers who were black. So, I mean, I, I just feel so terrible about that, and we never told a student, a special ed student, that they should graduate right away, and we kept them till they were up to 21, and we educated them in the school. I just, you know, I mean, I know that what I did was help to do this, but the real hard work was done by the administrators, and that's why our kids did well. That's why our kids kept getting better and better and better and better. They said all these different things in action, and they stood by them, and they gave the teachers the right to teach. And that's, that's how I feel, I feel very strongly that, you know, you don't work, you know, 20, 25 years without being proud of what the heck you do, and, and I, I know our people are proud of what they've done, and they deserve to be loud, not, you know, whatever. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do. I just want to thank the gymnastics team and the coach and the parents for coming out, and to the school board for voting on that tonight, and also to the administrators for coming out, and Dr. Breton, beautiful job, well-stated, beautiful job, and we hear you. We hear you loudly and clearly, and we appreciate you guys coming out and being vocal on your behalf. behalf, and I know, I'm sure I'm speaking for everyone, that we're hoping that the independent investigator wraps up sooner rather than later, so that we can put this behind us and do whatever we have to do to move forward, but thank you for taking the time to write that and read that, because it was beautiful and well said, so thank you for doing that.
Anyone else?
Just a final word? One quick thing? Thank you for sharing that Mount Olive is good, but not perfect, and we have a lot of room for growth, especially when it comes to our diversity and inclusion and equity, but I do want to share for the record, because I often hear that this is the best it's ever been, these are the best scores that it's ever been, this is, I hear that often, and so I just have to go back and look, and so when I rewind the clock and go back to May of 2015, I find that US News and World Report rankings were released. In 2015, Mount Olive High School was ranked 50th in New Jersey, 1,635 in the nation, 50th in New Jersey, I think now we're 67. And in 2016, Newsweek recognized the high school as one of the 500 best high schools in the country. That year, only 50 New Jersey schools were recognized, 17 were academies or magnets. Of the remaining 35, only six Morris County schools were selected: Kenalan, Adam, Madison, Montville, Monique, and Mount Olive High School. So, we have a history of academic success, but again, not perfect, we have work to do, but the, again, I'll say that the folks who have laid the foundation, folks on the board long before I got here, administrators long before I got here, and I just wanted to share with you that, who don't, or what you've done, and hopefully, you can resolve whatever issues that you've, thank you.
Okay.
I don't feel the need to actually speak, but I do want to speak out here and say that I agree with everybody, and I find it very sad that we are bound by contracts and quieted by things, by legalities. I wish we could just have open communication, but obviously, that's not the way things work, and I do really hope that we can get this moving and move forward and complete this test, so it could be a very good working environment, because I do believe it's very caustic right now, and we are aware of that, and it's not something anyone here wants. So I hope everybody could hang tight until we can resolve everything.
You know I always have something to say, and I have a lot to say. First of all, I want to say I'm very proud of Mount Olive, we have a tremendous school district, very proud of what we've accomplished. Someone once asked me, "Are you a smart guy?" And I said, "Yeah, I'm very smart." And I say this with all modesty, I'm very smart in common sense and kindness, I'm not smart in anything else. So that's what I'm going to speak about right now, and that's common sense. The charge to the Board of Education is simply this, to oversee the operation of the district and to give it goals and guidance and direction. This board has not been doing that. I'm very sad to say that, but it has not been doing that, and I'm part of that blame too. When we have to see what's been happening here with people coming and complaining about conditions of working here and everything else, that's not good. It's not good. We shouldn't micromanage, no, that's not the case. That man over there we hired to do the job, he's the one who should be managing the district, but we have to oversee it. The buck stops with us. We get the blame for everything that's happening here tonight, this board takes the blame for it, no one else, we do. We were sworn in and elected to hold a good position and oversee this district, and we are not doing it. We're just not doing it. We should be getting out and going and looking at our facilities, we should be going out and talking to people, principals, directors, everyone, not to tell them what to do, that's not our job, but to gather information, what's happening, so that when we come here to make votes, we have a better educated decision to make, and we're not doing that. I had a problem two weeks ago. I came to this board office, I couldn't get into the main office up there. So what did I do? The next day, I called Mr. Karifi. I said, "Mr. Karifi, I can't get into that office." The receptionist had to let me in, he says, "I'll check on it." I got a call 10 minutes later from the board, from the superintendent, "Don't you ever call anybody, you call me." No. If I'm sworn in to operate and oversee this district, I will speak to anyone I want to, not to tell them what to do, I can't do that, but to ask for information so that I can make a good decision. I took a lot of umbrage for that, and I'm laying it on the line, because I don't believe in hiding words. But I'm telling you right now, with the morale in this district sucks. It just sucks.
Mr. Shalachi, Mr. Shalachi, with all due respect, Mr. President, this is something we should be talking about in closed session. With all due respect, I'm not going to answer publicly, Mr. Shalachi, I think we should just move to public, once you're done, we should just move to closed session.
I'll accept that, but at least you know what I had to say. I just, I'm very upset with us.
So am I.
I think we have to be a better board, I think we have to take better direction of what we want to do, and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to go into a closed session, please.
Yeah, second.
That the board meeting, in confidential session for the purpose of discussion, we are going to discuss current time privileges and personnel.
I appreciate you.
And there will be no, sorry?
Legal.
And legal, and there will be no action taken. Now that you're at the meeting, I want to let you know, some of the things you say should be said.